We're ready.
We will now call this meeting to order at 12:32 PM. We will start with a roll call for the record. I am Vice Chair Hans Uetz and I am present. When I call your name, please indicate if you are present. Chair Dr. Sultan? Chair Dr. Sultan is not present. Board Member Anderson? Board Member Anderson is not present. Board Member Herndon?
Present.
And Board Member Johnson Davis?
Present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is executive session. Do I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing land, legal, and personnel matters?
No move.
Board Member Johnson Davis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Board Member Herndon seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Do I have a motion to exit executive session for the purpose of discussing land, legal, and personnel matters where no votes were taken?
No move.
Board Member Anderson makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Board Member seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We will now call this pre-work session to order at 2:36 PM. Thank you for joining us today for our Board of Education pre-work session. Our board meeting cadence allows board members to prepare for upcoming regular meetings through pre-work sessions. These sessions are typically more casual and are primarily information gathering. No formal vote will be taken. We will begin our pre-work session with our book study, Modern Day Strategies for Community Engagement: How to Effectively Build Bridges Between Communities. One. Okay, let's see. Each year, the school board selects a book that will assist us in living out the duties and responsibilities of our school board governors. Today, Vice Chair question of chapter two, Why Bother Doing Community Engagement?
Is that my cue? Okay. So I have to admit that as I read this book, I'm reading it with the community conversation around the ECLC in mind, right? That's just sort of the most immediate, major piece of community engagement that we have in front of us and that we've been dealing with and that we've been getting feedback on how we could do better, frankly. And so that's kind of the construct of how I've thought through it as I'm reading the book. And as we move down the line and each person engages, I do want us to just go ahead and use the questions that were in the book, right? So question one was, do you have a business case for community engagement? In that context, let's talk about it vis-à-vis the ECLC. And then the second one was, will or could save us time, money, and/or misunderstandings? Again, preferentially vis-à-vis the ECLC, but if you have other perspectives, also throw those in there. Basically, a two-sentence, single-paragraph chapter, so there's not an enormous amount of meat in this chapter. What I did want to engage on, I think it does make a very strong case for why I'm doing community engagement. One of the things I'm interested in seeing throughout the rest of this book is, I think we have to be careful to not make the assumption that community engagement means everyone will be brought along. She leans a little bit into that, as if these particular case examples that she uses brought the communities along, but I actually, I was involved in both of these, both the Pittsburgh conversation, which she uses in this chapter, and the Proctor Creek conversation that she used in the previous chapter. And one of the really important things to keep in mind was, while those engagements were really critical to involve the community, by no means at the end of the day was everyone happy. And I think we have to make sure that we're aware that community engagement does not mean unanimous consent on behalf of the community. There are going to be times that you engage members of the community where they're simply not going to come along. I mean, a great example, in our current experience with the ECLC, I think this lesson, there is still a contingent of individuals in the community that really want the space at Trinity to just be part. There isn't a community engagement that is going to move those individuals to being in support of the school. And that's okay, dissent is okay, but it's not our role, nor should it be our objective, to explain it in such a way that we change all of their minds. So all we can do is put the information out there and provide the opportunity for feedback. In this case, so a little bit of detail, a little bit of color on the case study in the Pittsburgh community here. The real conflict that happened, in hindsight, it's kind of frustrating that it happened this way, but generally, the art community that was supporting a lot of this and funding a lot of this had the index towards no censorship of the artist, the artist gets to do whatever the art. We create these opportunities to beautify communities through art and we allow the artists to express themselves. And in this case, the mural really was, I mean, just sort of objectively speaking, I can very much understand why a creature or a pastor walking by that mural every day would be frustrated that you had a snake eating a person, a serpent eating a person in the middle of the community. I fully understand, right? And so post facto, because if it got painted before any conversation happened with the community, we had to have this conversation. And the community was fairly unanimous around, we would prefer not to have a serpent eating a human across the street from a church, feels a little bit on the nose. But the art donors were very much of the perspective of, it's censorship if you take it that. And so that was actually a pretty raw conflict that happened between them. Ultimately, it went the community's way, as one would expect it to. But that is an example where there wasn't a community engagement that was going to arrive at an answer that everybody loved. It really was fairly binary, one group lost, one group won. You had to do the engagement to actually arrive at what was best for the community to live with that piece of art. So with this perspective, I think maybe if we just go down the line, if we want to start with Board Member Anderson and talk about a couple of the questions that were in the book.
Sure. So like you, I've been, I'm gonna take this off. I'm not spreading anything to anyone. Thank you, sorry. At least I hope not. I mean, I only know as much as Keston says, so sorry. But anyway, here I am again, and excuse me for the distraction. So like Hans, I have also been reading these with a specific focus on the ECLC. If nothing else, practically speaking, our last community meeting and then the upcoming one on Monday. And I think, I agree, Hans, that we are never going to necessarily satisfy everyone, and logically, we can't. But I do think that we can use things so that we do cultivate that goodwill. I think there's a mention in the book about the absence of goodwill when people aren't included. And so take the park spaces, just one example. I read through all the emails I could find, because some people would email us with ECLC in the subject setting, and in other cases, people would email questions or concerns with a different subject matter. And I counted about thirty-nine. And I saw one that specifically said the process that we used didn't allow us to give input. And then I looked at our past participation, so it was a business case. I don't know what else we can do specific to the ECLC, but we still have the ECLC as one part of this bigger plan. And so, you know, one of the things I noticed is that the majority of participants for the August 21st past session, as well as the September 11th one of 2024, largely CSD employees. And so I'd like to see, and maybe it's because I'm used to having to sell things, you know, as a teacher, not everything that we're going to do in the classroom is necessarily something that students want to do, but there can be an appreciation of why we need to do that. And so I still feel strongly that we have an opportunity to not just let people speak, but let people know that we have entertained these questions, and here's the kind of robust information we can give you, so you aren't satisfied, that we are considering X, Y, and Z. And one thing I'm encouraged that we're now doing, I believe, is a new, am I allowed to speak about this, a form that I believe the community is going to get in responding. Am I allowed to talk about it? I guess it's a little late for me to do it.
But we're not, we're not.
What form are you talking about?
I wouldn't.
So there are two things here. At the end of the day, as someone who has spent almost three decades in education and spent about two decades going to board meetings, it's nice to know that I have a forum to speak, but it's more important for me to know that the logical decisions are being made, not just the feeling ones, and that I can get clear information when I need that. So in the year and eight months that I've been on the board, I think we've done six community meetings, and I love hearing from people. But I would love for us to also have a way to synthesize that information as a collective body versus each of us listens and then remembers what we heard and then moves with that memory of what we heard. And I believe one thing we're now getting to use at some point is this kind of database form where community members are able to submit questions, concerns, et cetera.
Yes, that form is already on Symbly. And board members have access to the dashboard to look at the information, so.
Okay. And then the other thing I put here, will community engagement save you time, money, and misunderstandings? I think so. On the mechanism district uses and have to use regarding the funding with TSA would be one example. So I think that can save us time and misunderstandings. Thank you.
Sure. Board Member Herndon?
I... I don't know. I think that people feel like they, hasn't been engaged in, if something happens, they disagree with. Think if you were to like, measure good engagement, my reading of this is, the mural has to exist for there to be discussion about the engagement. We know, those who've been on the board, that post-COVID was the largest turnover of superintendents in the state, like massively. COVID didn't make superintendents bad, it just made people really care about whether the schools were going to be open to take care of their kids. And I bet that the engagement awards go to those communities that... A lot of people, the ECLC is not a controversy. I mean, I shared with some of you that I was at a public gathering that was very social, was approached by, my count stopped at fifty, like, hey, do we need to show up to say we support the ECLC? Do we need to show up and like, bat this? Do we need to... And I'm like, well, you should do what you want to. I want you to be engaged. Like, they're not interested in being engaged because they don't feel like there's anything to fight. And I don't know what to do with that information.
It's a really interesting observation, or Board Member Herndon, because it's a hundred percent correct that the amount of engagement that the mural in Pittsburgh would have gotten prior to it being painted could be measured in single digits, right? Like, people would not have shown up or really cared.
Yeah.
They happened to paint what I think is probably the harshest thing you can legally paint across the street from a church. And so, yeah, the community got very engaged immediately after that. And so it is, it is, I mean, I even referenced this in the last community meeting, that it wasn't until, and this was always going to be the case, it wasn't until we started talking about the capital and we started talking about the bonds and we started talking about the money, that we got true engagement. Had we tried to do robust community engagement a year and a half ago, I don't think we would have gotten the people to show up on the ECLC to really talk about it. And so it is, it's a really good point that you raise. Like, there is a little bit of work that has to be done before the community is even productively able to engage.
Can I follow up for that? Because I was thinking of the city charter. And when I found out that we have a board member on the, I went to the city's website and I noticed they were doing like a civic application. So besides the important entities in the city, the city was putting it out there for anyone who lives in the city to apply. And so I definitely appreciate the fact that money is always going to get people's attention, but I also think that we could engage sometimes in just that way too, as opposed to saying, well, I think it's going to be that or it won't be that. So I can see the money point, but you know, in hindsight, I wonder if we had put more out there, then, you know, maybe we could say definitively, see, people weren't engaged until they found out about the money.
Well, that was the path process, right? I mean, and it's imperfect or whatever criticisms you may have of it, that was an effort to try to identify people in the community that could engage. And I should also point out, the charter, it's still sixty or more percent of the people in that room are actually appointed as opposed to volunteer. My guess is, now, I hope this isn't going to be the case, but if changes happen to the charter that end up being quite controversial, we're going to get ten X the amount of people in the community to engage than we currently have engaged, right? And that's kind of, again, that's just a little bit of a way. And it's not a criticism of the public, like, you pay attention to the things that impact you and you don't know what impacts you until you're talking about money, or until you're talking about something that changes for you. So I think that's kind of the challenge that I am hoping she engages with a little bit later in the book, is how do you, effectively, we're struggling with, how do you drum up community support for something that the community is not yet worried about?
I mean, definitely, no one shows up and is like, I'm really happy with the outcome, but God, I hate the path that we used to get here. I'd like to protest that. I feel like a lot of people.
Really?
When they're a hundred percent. And they're just like, I just didn't like the democratic process that got here.
Unlikely.
No, no one. No one's showing up. And that, I mean, and that's how we like, we do need, I'm not saying we shouldn't be aware of it, I think the good, the only good part about these four paragraphs is like, you should ask yourself, why are you engaged? And I think you engage in good faith, do what you can, make sure you're making the right decisions and respond when things do bubble, but you can't let the response distract you from the good work that you're doing, distract you from the, that you have. It's why it's important for a school board to have things like the B-mot, like the calendar, like, you know, hey, we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about capital this month, we're going to talk about planning. And we have to have those conversations, because if we don't, then four months later, I mean, the one parent who talked about the public meeting, it was like, well, we talked about the vehicle fleet for twenty-five minutes at a meeting where ECLC was on the calendar. That was us being responsive to what the community wanted us to be engaged in.
Yep.
And the real answer was, if the legal requirement of the leases were out, so they renewed it, it didn't even require a board, next issue, let's move on. But then people have been very upset if we hadn't said it that way. There's a reason I don't speak to people, because that's what's on my mind. I also want them to be heard.
So I struggle.
Question?
I think, I'm gonna take the second question first, which is how to, will community engagement save you misunderstandings? And I think, yes, I think maybe some of what we need to improve upon is level-setting expectations with community members. I think you can take feedback to a point, but maybe with large communities or even smaller communities, community engagement or engagement doesn't always mean that leaders are looking for a different or an alternative pathway. I think another example, completely unrelated to the ECLC, I can remember being a part of the, a group of stakeholders that were involved with the planning of the new children's hospital. Now, am I the CFO of the hospital? Am I the CMO of the hospital? Absolutely not, but I am one of the physician leaders. But they were very clear about where I had input and where I had none. There were points in time where they engaged me and points in time where my emails did not get returned. But I didn't, I had that expectation upfront. They were very clear about when decisions got made and they were telling physicians, nurses, other leaders to warm them up to an idea and move them along. And then there were points in time where the decisions were made to hire leaders. I think maybe that's where, in our quest to build relationships with the broader community, maybe at some point, we're, we may be getting feedback overload. And then at that point in time, the expectation is such that everybody's feedback, the feedback is going to be taken and the decision is going to be changed. And that, you would, you would have, no decision would get made if you took everybody's opinion into consideration. That's part of our job, is to make decisions. And sometimes, like you said at the beginning, you're going to take everybody with, some people with you and some people you simply will not. I think with, I think that's some of where I think we can improve going forward with community engagement here, is that I think we need to be clear about where we are at an impact. Decision point, or we're looking for community feedback, we're here to clear up misunderstandings, clear up misperceptions. And, but we, as a governing body, have made a decision, but we're not looking to have our minds changed. And sometimes, a decision may not be one that you agree with, or it may be uncomfortable, but that is what we've done in a position of leadership. Otherwise, you'll get bombarded with opinions. And you also can only take feedback at certain points in the decision-making process. You cannot take them every five minutes. Otherwise, you'll get nothing done. And I also think, you know, I was thinking with, you know, a lot of the emails that I get, it also goes the other way. I think there are some points with some community members who are expecting feedback from us. They want data polls, they want, you know, information about this, that, and the third, you can name it, and they want it by a particular point in time. And we've kind of set the expectation that people have access to higher-level leaders at every point in time. And I personally think that's unreasonable. I can't pick up the phone and call Donna Highland and expect her to call me back. I have to go through administrative system, and even then, it may be a stretch. There's some pathways. I wonder if some of these things could go through resolved CSD, like some of, some folks who want extensive numbers, they want a lot of, I feel like they, a lot of this falls on the finance team, they want a lot of numbers about the budget, a lot of things that take Dr. Broom's time, but her job is to run an organization, is to make sure folks get paid, bills get paid. I mean, while I feel like these concerns are valid, I think maybe our expectation should be that things get done in a timely fashion, but not that people stop what they're doing to answer emails. You know, but I think if we don't set that expectation, this is reasonable, we want to engage, we hear you, but this is the, this is what we're capable of, then that creates misunderstanding and that creates lack of trust and lack of, people think that we don't, we're not listening. But I think maybe we need to do better, saying, upsetting boundaries and saying, this is what we can do, this is what we can't, this is what we won't. And we're, this is reasonable.
Well, I've seen this community over the past two years and two months around engagement. And thirty emails, truly.
Other issues?
Not a lot. So to Board Member Herndon's point of, yes, there is engagement, but thirty emails, when we know that we have 5,500 children currently enrolled, it's a lot of work. And it takes away from all the other things. I say all the other things because their early, new Early Childhood Learning Center is one initiative on the strategic plan where there are sixteen listed. Where student success in all areas by this board's feedback was put to number one. And so I just want us to remember that community engagement draws all of our energy to engage, but at the same time, the number-one purpose of the school system is to educate children. That's our number-one purpose. That is our North Star. That is keeping the main thing the main thing. And so when a thing is happening, it's drawing away from that so that we can ultimately do that even better.
I, I do want, I mean, I will say this, that, that all of the things in the strategic plan are not equal, right? I mean, like, so, so I do understand why the community engages particularly hard on something that is, you know, tens of millions of dollars versus something that isn't, right? So I do understand that this is a thing that the community was always going to engage in this way on. But, but that, I mean, the other, the other points are well-taken. I mean, it is that, it isn't as if we're facing a massive, community-wide, absolute resistance to doing this. There's a small number of people that still have extent questions that we just need to continue to engage on.
Doctor Johnson Davis?
Well, I would put back this a little bit on all of the things on the strategic.
I mean, in a capital way, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're all, they're all extraordinarily important. Not all of them are going to be seventy million dollars.
Right. But, and I don't, but I don't think that they have to be to, for the community to engage in a certain level. And so, to Doctor Wood at this point, these are things that we did engage the community on in terms of our strategic plan, I, I saw as well. And that would be my bit in this case, that, you know, the, the creation of the strategic plan and that, that path that we took to finalize that. And so, you know, I would encourage the community to be engaged on all of those things. The other thing is, I agree with Dr. Sultan's comment about managing community expectations in terms of, when we say input and feedback, we really need to be careful about how we use that language. And one of the things that stood out to me on page twenty-one is, the author said, the private and public sector don't just activate community engagement because it's the morally right thing to do, they choose the communication methodology because it's the most straightforward way to ensure the success of a project. And so that communication methodology, that language stood out to me because communication can, can take on different forms and look different ways, and it doesn't just have to be the solicitation of input or feedback, it could be to inform. And so that was something that just stood out to me, that there are different ways. The other thing that stood out to me was, she used the term culturally competent.
Yeah.
And I thought that that's important. And, you know, particularly if you are trying to do something in a specific community and you're trying to address specific needs, that there needs to be a level of cultural competency. And so I think that moving forward, that's something that we should, you know, keep at the forefront of our minds as we are saying that we want to, you know, help close the achievement gap and we are, you know, putting this physically to help give access to members of our community that we, you know, keep that in mind too. And ask ourselves, what does that mean for us as we continue with this project?
Um, you know, I was, I was just thinking about like the social contracts and like, you know, we're, like, there's kind of a mutual awakening, I guess, of like, um, you know, we're, like, there's kind of been mutual awaiting, I guess, of like, the community has given us like their money and responsibility of their children, that there's a moral imperative there, but there's also a faith and a trust. And that, like to Doctor Sultan's point, like we need to remind them of that faith and trust, like, hey, we're operating with y'all in mind and it's important to keep reminding them of how, what we're doing will achieve that. I also think, y'all are taking these lessons for the ECLC, but what I are working on is engaging with our student stakeholders and people in the district. And we're, we're trying to find creative ways to get them engaged because we know probably young people are the hardest to engage right now. And so we're also thinking of ways, like, how can kids are reactionary, how can we build like that investment beforehand so that we're actually like accurately representing that for management?
Adults are pretty reactionary too.
Especially with our funding and stuff.
So that was it. Thank you very much. Oh, I, I'm very interested. Her hand up.
Yeah, I just think when I've heard Doctor Sultan and, I feel like I've heard this quote, I wonder if we can do a better job of communicating not just the topic of the community engagement meeting, because they are different from the board meetings with public comments, but also the function, right? So if we are, my resolution of the March community meeting at FAB was like, hey, we've got a bunch of decisions to make and we need to know what your priorities are, right? Which can be different from the community meeting that we had at Oakhurst where it, and I love that one because it seemed to be, hey, we're going to allow more time just for you to ask whatever you want, right? Whether it's about books versus online or how, you know, schools are paying for things, whatever. And so I think sometimes we can clear up some of that if we're letting people know ahead of time, not just the topic, but where we are in the, I'm thinking of the public comment feedback without it as well. What's going on decision-making wise? So this is more to give you information than find out what other information you want that is appropriate and possible to share versus this is what we need from you to actually do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Vice Chair Us. Next month I will facilitate Chapter Three, which is titled, With Whom Do You Engage? Doctor Whitaker, please introduce the next item.
Thank you Chair Sultan. I would like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch, Chief of Staff, to gather your input on future policy development for the use of electronic devices by students in light of new legislation and facility use policies in response to board requests.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Doctor Sultan, Vice Chair Butt, esteemed members of the Board, Student Director Ms. Nifatra, and Superintendent Doctor Whitaker. Today I will facilitate a discussion with you regarding two different policy topics. First, we will discuss the development of policy JCDAS, Use of Electronic Devices by Students. And second, we will identify content for inclusion in S, Facilities Expansion Program Policies, continuing the conversation from last month's board retreat on policy priorities. We will start with policy JCDAS, Use of Electronic Devices by Students. Let me provide some context as to why we are introducing this policy for discussion now. JCDAS must be developed to meet the requirements of House Bill 340, also known as the Education Act. This legislation requires local boards of education to adopt a policy that prohibits bell-to-bell access to personal electronic devices for students in grades K through eight. A policy is required to be in place by January first, 2026, and must go into effect by July first, 2020. While this legislative restriction for personal electronic devices applies only to grades K through eight, we already have some experience with limiting cell phone use here in CSD with our high school students. DeCater High School introduced a cell phone protocol implemented in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year ahead of any state requirement. At DHS, there's not a bell-to-bell restriction. Instead, teachers collect cell phones at each class period and students are allowed to use their devices between classes and during lunch. Overall, the implementation of the procedure at DHS has been successful, and the experiences and data from DHS can help inform the regulations and our procedures at our elementary schools and our middle school once policy JCDAS has been adopted. For example, you can see here some of the data from a DHS teacher survey administered twice last school year, in September and in February. Teachers overwhelmingly reported a positive academic impact and students being more attentive in class. Qualitative data included observations that students are more collaborative and engaged. The data also shows a need for consistent enforcement throughout the school year and identifies some opportunities to address other distractions, in this case, smartwatches, headphones, and even school-issue devices. DHS students were also surveyed. When compared to teachers, a smaller percentage of student respondents reported being more focused, more engaged, or less distracted in class. But importantly, some students did. Qualitative data were mixed, with some students requesting access to their phones, give me back my phone, but others indicating that they felt relief at being forced off their phones during class. Administrators also monitored implementation of the protocols, recording a ninety-seven percent compliance rate for teachers during their fall 2024 checkpoints. Instructional leaders also observed stronger instructional time and less disruption in class. The school reported twenty-one split referrals, twelve cellphone bans, and forced students to sign ISS in the first semester of implementation. While the data I just shared is specific to the high school, it does provide some local context for today's discussion in developing the mandated policy prohibiting bell-to-bell access to personal electronic devices in K, in grades K through eight. Each of you has received a sample policy JCDAS produced by the Georgia School Boards Association, or GSBA. It is in that folder at your seat. It is also attached to this agenda item in Simboli. It provides a starting point for our discussion as we consider what you would like to see included in the CSD policy. On the screen, you will see some prompts that I hope will be helpful as I invite discussion and direction about what the board would like to see as we draft policy JCDAS. Specifically, this might include what you like or what you might question about the GSBA sample policy. It also provides some areas that you may or may not want to address in policy, such as electronic device use during offsite events, athletics, or while on the bus. Staff will use your feedback to inform a draft policy for first read next month. So at this time, I welcome your discussion and direction for drafting policy JCDAS for City Schools at DeCater.
I think the first concern I have is the second paragraph while on school premises. That's just, speaking as someone who has seen it in the classroom and then as a parent, I just don't know how that's going to be enforced. So my understanding from the high school is that it seems like this kind of approachable policy where the promotion is not on cell phones during class, but students may have them on their person in between classes, whereas if it's not on the premises at all, then, I mean, every day it's like, hey, so-and-so.
So a couple of things. One is the law for K eight prohibits access to those during the school day. So it is a bell-to-bell preference unless we decided to incorporate nine twelve as a policy as well. So it prohibits, the law itself prohibits access to the devices. It doesn't mean it can't be on its app access. It does say it's not permitted to access those personal electronic devices.
So, I mean, I, I'm just putting it out there. I mean, it sounds like parents need to be as informed of this as the students because having the students not have it and their parents texting them is going to largely create more.
Correct. So once the policy is adopted and that's part of, you know, it has to be in place by July, then of course, or by January, for those J months. So then we also, of course, will work on the regulation on the house side, working with the schools, or regulation to determine exactly what it looks like to prohibit that access.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think I misunderstood. I thought this was what GSBA crafted based on the law.
It is.
I hadn't realized that the law was effectively saying no cell phone from beginning of school day till end of school day.
It is. And so that's why this sentence in GSBA says students in grade K through eight are not permitted to access, you know, while on the school premises during school hours. Because that's exactly what the law says. Yeah, it can be confusing.
Whitaker have thought about how the last sentence of the second paragraph, any student found in violation of this policy and/or its procedures during the school day shall be subject to progressive discipline consequences as outlawed in the Student Code of Conduct. So, is it in the Code of Conduct to support this or will have to be modified? My thought is a third grader that gets caught with phone in hand and, and I don't, I don't want this to increase our discipline infractions or this to be used as some method to overly discipline children.
Yeah. We will have to ensure the language is in there. Some of it is already in our Code of Conduct, but it's only more so thinking about it in the high school perspective. But we need to make sure that it's in place, K eight at the, for the, for the law. So the first step is the policy by January. Then, once we have firm what your policy is, we will then have the regulation, we will ensure the Code of Conduct lines, and then all of that is in preparation for the new school year next year.
And I guess, I guess maybe to follow that up, I think, because we're talking about K to eight kids, I think K to eight, I'm thinking, okay, these are first graders, second graders, progressive discipline consequences, I don't know how that language sits with me. I think it should be enough that maybe it falls back on, you know, any student found in violation will be subject to the Code of Conduct. And then maybe that leaves it on us to modify the Code of Conduct. You know, otherwise, I, I, I don't know if I'd like the language in there that, you know, perchance a, a third grader who gets caught with a phone once, level one violation, caught twice, level two, and we're accelerating up and it's, it's a phone violation.
I, I, it, it's in there now. So progressive discipline is terminology that is, I will say, traditional in education. So it's, it's in there now. Typically, our first, second, third graders aren't on their phones. But we do have third graders that walk to school and their parents want to know once they have arrived. And there is, so that's why the how of this is going to be so important for our local context and community. You know, we were talking specifically about the middle school. Well, they come in some doors, but they experience the whole school day and then they leave out of different doors. So what does that look like? There are a lot of hows that we need to work on once we establish the what. But that progressive discipline is really just the language that you use.
I, I would say that, I, I certainly wouldn't support us being stricter than the law. I mean, this is already, it feels pretty, pretty, pretty strict. I actually think what's been at the high school has worked pretty well for the high school. And so, I mean, I know they're exempted from the law, but I.
You're comfortable leaving our policy in K eight right now?
Yes. And the one thing that I would say, when we start thinking about regulation, to the extent that it is different at different school bands, it needs to be consistent across that school band. So it, I, I don't think we want Glenwood to be different from Winona Park, to be different from Oakhurst, like all K two should operate the same way. Maybe at three, five, we have different ways of managing it, but both tally and FAB should be the same way, right? Like, I, I think that that's pretty important. And, and, and to the extent that we allow more flexibility as the students age, I think that's a reasonable thing to consider in the regulation. I would be loathe to put that level of detail into the policy and bind your hands that much. I think that, that, that leaving, more or less leaving it as written because it comports to the law and then allowing the nuance to be done at the, the regulation level is the right way to.
Okay. I have a question about the, I, well, I know you posed to us the question about should we address, you know, extracurricular activities and trips like that? So is the bell-to-bell, does that consider, if you go on a field trip during the school day, is that considered within the bell-to-bell?
So there is definitely there, the way this is written. So as I worked with legal, I said, you know, obviously there are pretty strict requirements. We have to prohibit it bell-to-bell. We don't get any flexibility. Where are the places for the boards to make flexible decisions? And these were some of the areas that the law didn't, didn't prescribe necessarily. So during, so I think even in here, there's a sentence about like, yeah, school activities such as trips, athletic events, extracurricular activities may be used in accordance with the appropriate use guidelines. So again, kind of what you just described is, is let's let that happen more at the kind of regulation and implementation level there. Did that answer your question, Mark?
Well, I guess then we don't need, that this has already been addressed then, I guess, in terms of those three bullet points, you know, we'd like to address in policy, we'll still go to access it with him, we're just going to leave it at the local level.
The question would be, we, is it more broad in the policy and then we address it more through the implementation, the regulation?
Okay.
Yeah, because I can, I can see a couple of scenarios where it's going to be very situation-dependent. You know, a field trip that comes back to the school, maybe they can get to their devices at the school, but a field trip that ends after the school is done, you added a significant amount of complexity in trying to get them back into this. Like, I just, I, I don't know that I would want to specify at this level the detail.
Or will students be able to have their phones at Tybee Island?
Yeah, exactly.
That's why field trip, that field trip piece is listed. I was thinking overnight field trips as well. If your child is away from you overnight and they're in, you know, three through five, I, you know. To say, goodnight. I think, well, you really don't.
Yeah, but maybe I'm just repeating what people said. I don't see why we want to put that stuff in policy. You know, my daughter played middle school sports and, hey, Mom, did you fill out the form so that I can drive back with you to, a field trip is coming in late because of the bugs and I think also the recognition that so many of our students are growing up in situations in which the cell phone, there is no landline. So, yeah, I would not want to see that stuff specified in policy because I think there are valid reasons why kids need to have a phone.
But it sounds like we're fairly comfortable with kind of the language that GSBA put out, keeping it a little bit more broad. So we will tweak that just a little bit and bring it to you for first read next month and go from there.
Maybe this is silly, but, you know, I'm thinking it's like when we have a fire drill at school, they give a specified number of feet and I'm like, you know where it is? But like, no. And then, you know, I show them like, hey, it's a football field, look what we're doing. So perhaps this is more regulation or just information. I think it might be helpful, given the fact that I would be one of those parents who's like, I need you to text me and let me know your. But we let kids know where that line is of school premises if they do need to then text because, hey, I got to school, okay. I don't know if that matters.
Yeah, I think, I think it prohibits the bell-to-bell access. And what I'm hearing from the board is to prohibit it there. So like if I'm first getting to campus, hey, walk it in now, and then I'm turning it in with a, you know, kind of that regulation.
Do we want to just codify in policy that nine to twelve also is prohibited in a slightly different way than this, but that it is? Yeah, but we are, right? Like, it is prohibited.
Right now, it's not legally prohibited. Right now DHS has protocols and procedures in place.
No, 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 but I mean, we, we, our policy as a school system, whether or not it's been codified in policy, our policy as a school system is that, that, yeah. No, it's just not a norm, it's policy, I would think.
We don't have a policy.
Well, we don't have a policy, but we are not allowing high schoolers to have access to their devices in the classroom.
Correct. The practice at the school that they rolled out beginning last year, it was more, we called it a procedure or a protocol or a practice. It is not codified in policy at all.
Understood. And so that's the question that I'm asking. I would not recommend that nine to twelve be as limited as it's stated here. I, I would basically say if we put it in policy, we would say, the high school, whatever, wait, they get to do what they're currently doing. I don't know. I'm, I'm more or less asking this for the board. If the will of the board is, then we don't mess with it, but.
I don't think we mess with it. I think based on that feedback, it seems to be working. So I'd say leave nine through twelve the way we have it and just address the law-encited K through eight.
Because what's the, I'm just asking, what's the risk?
I think, you know, what I see as a teacher is we say one thing and then another thing happens. And so the reality is, as much as as a teacher, I don't want those phones out because they're distracting and I don't want my daughter being distracted, the reality is whether you're communicating with college coaches, whether you're trying to arrange a doctor's appointment, students do need their phones for certain. students do need their phones for certain things. And so, I think not creating another situation where staff now are drawn from instructional time to be overseeing the cell phone in a policy that limits it, it does not need it.
The, the flip side of this is, what we don't want is a, a new principal at the high school to throw it out and just say, "Hey, we're not gonna do it," right? Like, what we do, like, the, and so, my suggestion is not to create a change in a policy that forces an alteration to the way the high school currently does it.
So, I, I want to share with you. So, on August of 14th, I went to a critical issues forum at Henry with the cell, cell phones and teams exploring policies and practices in Georgia. The legislator who drafted this initial legislation that pushed it through, and it is now law, was there. He spoke on a panel. A lot of what he talked about was whether or not this would come back again this year to address 9 through 12. So, it's been a big topic of conversation in Georgia of, yes, we have K-8, but there is still conversation on whether or not 912 went in. And if 912 would have gone into this legislation, would it have passed so easily in this session? Because when you bring in 912, you bring in a, the, a different developmental child that you are beginning to share, like you said, learn how to make your own doctor's appointments and do all of those. You're trying to help them become more independent. And so, I will say, based upon that conversation and that panel and the subsequent panels, I think this will be a topic of legislative session for this year again. So, my thought is move forward right now with what we must do. Because what I want, would not want us to try to do is to anticipate what is going to happen because that is going to more than likely be a potential conversation statewide. If we have what is working, I don't know if we need it just now. I'd say wait, at least to see, based upon what we're hearing from our lobbyists and what we're hearing from the Gold Dome for this legislative session, let's just see where it's going before we try to codify a little too early. Because we, we do know what we're already doing is working. That would just be my, my thought, knowing that none of us know what's gonna happen, but-
That may give us, um, a thing to lobby on, right? Like, if we feel like we have something that is working, respects the maturity of the students, but also allows attention in class, we should probably be at front of folks at the Georgia, of talk. Right? Yeah. And so, I, I'm fine with, with, right? I don't, I don't wanna force something into policy that's gonna be forced to change.
And six months, and we don't know. This we know we must do.
Yeah.
Um, I'm wondering, and just because the number one complaint I do hear is less about, like, not being able to go on Instagram or whatever, but about, um, like, an emergency situation, if they would be able to text their parents. Like, that is the main anxiety. I was wondering if there's any interest in, like, putting in something that ensures that phones aren't, like, locked away in a different room, like, are still somewhat accessible?
That, that's the part of why there is such a question and concern. So, if there is a true emergency matter of safety, as a student, I, I really need you paying, paying attention to me as the adult in the room, trying to give you direction on what to do, not texting what would be potentially misinformation to convolute in a true crisis. And so, that's one of the reasons, and that did come up in that topic or in that forum because they did, they had student voices there, they had adults there, administrators and superintendents were there, doctors and psychologists were there. I mean, it was a true critical issues forum on student access to phones and what it means to be in the classroom. So, I agree that students need to understand, but in an emergency, we do need, we need your attention, not this. And that's one of the reasons why in K-8, it was so easy to get it approved through both houses.
Um, that makes a lot of sense. I was just wanting to clarify, does access, like, could act, like, no, limited access even be, like, keep it in your backpacks? Like, if, so, that is, um, some counties have actually come forth and said that's how they're going to do it. They're going to tell students to keep it away in their backpacks. You can't take it out. That would then be the violation, but you're technically not accessing it.
And there are lots of different solutions. Oftentimes, those solutions come at a price.
Yes.
Um, I think about the, the synergistic badge we have. Um, when you start to talk about a solution, um, I know members of our board talk about unfunded mandates. When the Gold Dome puts things in legisla, legislation like this, it oftentimes will create an expense-
To comply.
To comply. And so, panic alert system is a, is in a, synergistic is a prime example. But then, at the same time, what type of funding do we receive to ensure that we can comply with that comes as well? So, all of those are the sorts of things that happen when you start to talk true compliance legislation.
Okay, I'll cut me a second.
Yeah.
So, she can move on, so she has one more.
Facility.
I just have two quick things. One, I see more smartwatches now that, um, the school is implementing the cell phones. I'm not sure if that is something to recognize. And two, so then, people will be giving comments, um, whenever it, it will get- Clear with the laws requiring, 'cause we might end up getting a lot of feedback asking us for stuff, like, "Can we control?"
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, let's be explicit when we're asking for feedback that this is the language of the law.
This is the language of the law. We have to do this and, and that kind of thing, yes. And, um, it's personal electronic devices for the K-8, so that would include-
Tough one, I heard.
Um, I just wanna offer a point of clarity to that point also about your question about the progressive facility. That is actually part of the policy.
Okay. Mm-hmm. That's what you're saying, down here.
Um, methodology of banning, uh, bell-to-bell access to-
Just, you know, for kind of this.
But that is also, again, up to the school, so what's the progress?
So, we don't have to suspend the students for using their phones.
Right.
'Cause that's the only time I rolled my eyes, was like, you were so distracted in class, we're gonna suspend you from class. That was my mind. So, whatever can happen as it's implemented, to avoid that, that'd be great.
All right. So, I will bring that back, um, for First Read then next month, which, if approved, then it would be open for public comment. And we'll make sure it's clear on kind of the letter of the law there. All right. We do have one more topic for policy discussion during tonight's pre-work session. That's, um, Policy Code S. S, which is Facility Expansion Program. Policies were initially proposed on the annual policy calendar for the month of April. But last month, the board recognized that facilities priorities may need to be addressed earlier, especially in light of the ongoing work on the Comprehensive Capital Improvement Plan. In response, an environmental scan was done to identify S policies in place in comparison districts. Currently, CSC has only one S policy in place, Policy SDC, Naming Facilities. A desire to develop additional S policies came up during the August board retreat during the facilitated discussion around policy priorities. Through the discussion, Policies FD, Facilities Long Range Planning, and FDB, Long Range Needs Determination, were identified as policies to potentially prioritize for development within the S policy category. Because these two policies emerged for development through the policy priority discussion at the board retreat, because we have limited time here, today, we are seeking any board input on the content or type of content you would like to see considered in initial draft of at least FD and FDB. Note that existing policies from other districts are available at your seats as a resource and to help you generate ideas if needed. As an example of possible input, one idea was proposed during the retreat. This was include, this was to include the annual capital update currently given to the board via practice into policy itself. So, this would be similar to how the production of an annual budget book was put into policy. And so, is that, in fact, something the board would like to have included in policy? And what else would you like us to build, yes, corny pun intended, into facility policy?
I'm still swallowing that. Um, uh, so, I, I do think both policies are necessary, and I just have sort of a, a instinctive reaction to the level of detail of Fulton County's hat. Like, it's, it, that's just too, you get into the number of students. And the, so, I, I definitely need much more towards the language from, I think we see with Henry County or Marietta, where it's just a little bit simple. Well, it's considerably simpler, more straightforward. Um, the addition of language that I'd like to see in both of those examples is, they, they both give a list of, like, times or ways or the hows of what you're gonna be considering.
Are you talking about F, are you talking about FDB?
Well, in this case, FDB.
FDB, okay.
But then, I'm gonna alter it to FD.
Okay, we're gonna do FD, okay. I just wanna make sure.
The feedback is the same in there.
Okay.
Um, so, it basically says, "The evaluation will be conducted to identify needed actions related to the following." And there's a list of six items. But I just, I always feel these go better with a miscellaneous bucket. Like, in the moment, things that might be determined at that particular point in time that needs to be considered, do you know what I mean? Like, like, what, what you'd hate to do is need to have it done, but the policy not anticipate the reason why it was needed.
So, some sort of, like, responsive language, like-
Other issues.
Considerations that are pertinent and deem to be relevant, but something along that-
Exactly, exactly. And that exact same piece of feedback, by the way, is, goes with FD, uh, where Marietta has laid out that it would also be-
And.
And other, others, yeah.
Considered but not limited to-
Exactly.
Okay.
Henry kind of has some broad language. It doesn't talk about, like, number of students you need or how much you'll put down on a loan or a bond. But it kind of says that you have, you must have a facility plan. Um, it has to have a facility plan, staff, who sits on it, how often you review those things. Um, you have to report out the team's findings to the board. The board has the opportunity to reject or approve those findings. So, maybe something that kind of starts with that broad stroke, sort of, at least that you will have a plan, you will have to report it out. And how often you will have to do so might be a good place to start. 'Cause kind of what Fulton has, I think, a lot might be in the regulation. Like, what's the cap for, you know, when we want to keep a school? When do we consider school overcrowded? Those sorts of things, um, that might, maybe we don't wanna put that directly in policy.
Fulton read them to me a little bit like they were trying to fix a problem they, they had, right? So, yeah.
I like the, you should consider, you know, well, I, I like both Marietta and Henry. FDB and F.
Yeah. I'm intrigued by their few dates in the APS one, but not dates everywhere. I don't know. So, for example, they say, like, in September, they'll announce whether they are looking into closing. Do some plans with APS, FDB.
Give me Fulton.
Fulton.
Fulton, what did I say? APS, oh, I apologize.
Um, you, you liked that they put in-
I, I, that's, that's a whole section of timeframe. Um, I don't necessarily care for their timeframe. I feel like it has a lot of specificity earlier, and then the, it doesn't, and then the timeframe falls off.
Is that something that we could consider as a part of the regulation and have it underneath a policy?
I would kind of think it would be a policy that if I, I would, I would understand the community and the, the board, when I would expect these sort of decisions to start and be announced and be made, you know?
Is it, don't we do that with the BOE? Not the BOE.
The BOP.
The, the BOP, that's-
The BOP does not say that we're gonna close a school. We will announce by X date, you know?
But they, but they do say that you will have a, we do say when the capital plan is- No, no, okay, so wait, I'm hearing what you're saying now. If we're going to announce a closure of a school, we have to have a certain amount of time that we announce it prior to that closure.
Correct.
That, yeah.
But there's, what I, I don't love the detail, like, we didn't do anything, like, the first part. The second part, like, and, and September, we'll, we'll, the, the board would announce, like, looking into this, we're trying to have some community, community forums to discuss. And then, no later than January, admin will form the revol, of results, make a recommendation. Um, I, I'm a fan, fan of it, I think, those dates and just sort of a general action.
Instead of being specific about dates, can we just talk about length of time?
What's the difference between a date and length of time, in a sense?
Just, just the, um, you know, you have to announce X number of months in advance of a closing, right? So, that, not necessarily a school calendar timeline, but like, you have to have X number of months prior to.
But, or is this still just for James, I'm sorry? 'Cause I agree with James. I like the specificity for people to see. And I think, um, maybe it's my, um, living, you know, most of my adult life by a school calendar. School calendars do typically have dates, so, I agree with James.
I agree. Ma'am, do you ask, can like, if a school needs to be closed in, like, December for some reason?
Yeah, I'm just-
Does it prevent us from doing that in theory?
It, it- The thing to do is not put a level of specificity into this policy that is going to inhibit our ability to move forward this year with plans that we may have. And I don't wanna put something into policy that is gonna inhibit our ability in future years to be able to make decisions that are, that are necessary. I do understand the need for, the desire to have windows of time, but, uh, I would just be cautious about putting that at a policy level, um, uh, for those reasons.
Can I ask, so, like, what I'm reading from this is logically by December 30th because of the January board meeting, because now you're in the second semester, you're starting to give all the things that happen in school districts. So, now, assuming there isn't some emergency crisis that would precipitate the closing of a building because of, I don't know, toxic stuff, whatever, then wouldn't there just be something written in that gives the recognition of an emergency that puts people at risk, which is different from typical district plan?
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, I'm gonna be cautious about wanting to add a level of specificity that might compromise our ability to do what we wanna do this year.
That's fair.
I mean, this is always something that we can revisit, right?
I mean, you could put- Kind of take some feedback, and based on what you said, we kind of have some ideas about the level of specificity. We can look at some different language and bring it back, obviously, for discussion so that we can, I mean, this is the whole point, is to, to get feedback on what it is that you'd like to see included, and we'll take a swing at it and then have further discussions so that we can refine it and get it to the level where we're, where we're ready to move on it.
Yeah, another, another alternative thought, a way to approach it, maybe, if we're uncomfortable with this level of specifics, like, you have to announce by this date. You have to, you know, give it a deadline, you know, in order, if you're gonna talk about closing a school, um, we'll have to see, oh, by- Yeah, X months prior. And then, that gives you the wiggle room to adjust the timeline as needed. You could do the meetings here, the announcement here, blah, 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 and shape them as you will. Um, 'cause that is, I mean, I, I agree with the time. That timeline's very organized, but it is very firm. Uh, but maybe if it was just one hard cutoff, then you could adjust it well, just as an alternative.
Mm-hmm.
I have one other question, and this is about the FDB policy. So, um, I wondered about letter S. So, I'm looking at Marietta's plan, I'm looking at Henry County's plan, you know, four times the amount of information. And I wondered if there's sort of a middle ground there. So, like, notice Fulton has a whole category devoted to building construction improvement by also. to building construction improvements by office organization, um, anything financial here, just the financial ability of the city and Marietta. And then Henry County, I don't know if there's anything.
So, think about the system and their central office, when you think about the level of specificity that can be put in policy. So Marietta's is that size and that amount, because that's what their central office capacity is.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lynch, and thank you, board members, for the discussion. We look forward to seeing the use of electronic devices by students, that policy next month in our work session. This will allow us to be in compliance for the January 1st adoption deadline. There being no further business, these, this pre-work session is adjourned at 3:45 PM, and we will go straight into work session. All right, we'll now call this work session to order at 3:45 PM. Thank you for joining us today for our monthly work session. Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the first presentation.
Thank you, Chair Sultan. I would like to call on Mr. Esten Melton, Chief of Safety and Technology Services. He almost gets a new title every, every presentation, to provide an update on our interoperable data system.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Dr. Sultan, vice chair, esteemed members of the board, student representative Latra, and Superintendent Dr. Whitaker. I'm happy to share with you an update on where we've been, where we're going with developing and sustaining interoperable data systems to support student outcomes and operational effectiveness. The interoperable data systems is one component of the organizational effectiveness and excellence strategic accelerator. Collecting all initiatives and programs shepherded by the Safety and Technology Services team, our work is in pursuit of student success in all areas. Before I was a tech nerd, I was a word nerd, so let's revisit our definition of interoperable data systems from last fall's presentation. Data is information that exists in some repository, whether it's attendance in infinite campus, salaries and smart fusion, public feedback from a stakeholder input form, or test scores sitting in a vendor database. Interoperability is the notion that we can pull the data from these repositories, courses around students, schools, programs. And the systems refers to governance, tools and processes that set parameters for and enable the use of data to support decision making to drive student outcome. And for the next few minutes, I'll discuss CSDs, governance, tools, and processes, progress, and future state. Let's start with governance. One major lift last year was establishing a data governance team facilitated by the Director of Data Systems, Ms. Gibson, composed of instructional leaders from the Wilson Center. The data governance team had several significant wins. One was documenting our data standards. This data standards documentation captures in writing to be succession ready, such fundamentals as the district's varied sources of truth for students and operational data, assessment system owners, and draw up connections between key data tools, roles within those tools, and job titles within the district. That framework is adapted from Emory University's data governance regimen, defines and distinguishes between data trustees, stewards, custodians, and users. This team also provided specifications to identify our new stated student data warehousing and visualization tool, EduClimber, which I'll discuss more in a few moments. And the data governance team identified immediate training needs for district and school leaders to maximize clean data upon initial entry and reduce the need for staff to do data cleanup in advance of state reporting windows. And as a direct result of that training, there was a 64% reduction in the number of students' records with errors from the initial October 2024 to March 2025 student class submission windows, and an 82% reduction in the number of records with errors from December 24, February 25, student record submission. This impressive performance highlights the interdependencies in school staff and their Wilson Center program and data support colleagues, and the role of Wilson Center subject matter experts in delivering impactful, high-quality professional learning. Administrators, administrative assistants, registrars, and other data custodians in entering clean, accurate, and compliant data in the first pass. This governance work continues into this year. The data governance team is expanding to include representation from our non-instructional colleagues in HR, finance, operations, and security. These voices will help further refine our data standards documentation and awareness. This year, the data governance team will also transition further from being descriptive of our environment to prescriptive of how we work. For example, defining CSDs, interoperability standards for evaluating and procuring new online tools. And of course, in the midst of this growth, members of the team, and particularly Ms. Gibson, our Director of Data Systems, will continue to actively contribute to the leveled-up, high-quality professional learning regimen that Ms. Walker shared with you during her State of HR presentation lesson. Now, in terms of tools, we opened last year with our first pair of public dashboards in public the third at mid-year. They cover core district metrics such as milestone data, college and career readiness performance, index, timing star results, and enrollment. Ms. Gibson's expertise allowed us to leverage a salaried employee consultant engagements and software licenses, cost reduction we realized both last year and in this year's budget. We also took steps toward retiring Smart Fusion, our antiquated HR and finance tool, by developing and publishing an in-depth request for proposal for its replacements. This year, we've continued our work with public dashboards, publishing our 2025 GMA milestone scores alongside the press release rather than several weeks later. The collaboration between technology, finance, and HR on procuring a replacement to Smart Fusion is also proceeding. I will share, unfortunately, none of the responses to the RFP met our high standards. We're amending and re-advertising it this month, and the project team still anticipates bringing an ERP procurement recommendation to the board this winter. And we're also excited that our friends in operations are eager to explore the computerized maintenance management system, or CMMS, meet their rapidly maturing needs to effectively manage data in the operations, support a regiment of preventative maintenance, and plan more strategically for capital equipment lifecycle. But our most exciting work around data tools last year and this year revolves around EduClimber. EduClimber is an interactive system that integrates whole child data into a single platform, with built-in tools for intervention tracking, collaboration, effective reporting, and early warning, driving system-level improvements. Leaders can zoom in, I'm sorry, zoom out for multi-year home district insights and record into the academic trajectory of even a single student. Although we'll continue to use Tableau to power our public dashboards for now, data governance team identified last year that the marketplace for student warehouse and biz tools have matured enough for us to go take another look at it. Having adopted several of Renaissance Learning's tools, starting with the Star Universal Screener, other tools to screen for signs of dyslexia and for intervention support, we quickly zeroed in on EduClimber as an app fit to support our leaders and teachers. We spent the spring and summer instantiating EduClimber, and we're nearly done ingesting historical and current data into the system. Data includes attendance, AP, progress reporting semester grade, assessment scores, including but not limited to, milestones, STAR, AP, and IV demographics, including race, home language, gender, program participation, including re-reduced price, meal status, special education, gifted ELL, English language learners, Section 504 support, housing and secure students supported by the McKinney-Vento Program, Georgia MCSS tiers two and three, and others. And a major integration we'll also excited about is pulling informative assessment data from a new tool called DNA, which the Teaching and Learning Team has been working on. Our team and Teaching and Learning Leadership recognized last year that the incumbent formative tool didn't meet our needs in terms of interoperability, couldn't easily get our data out. We moved to a more interoperable tool that will allow our systems to talk to one another. Powerfully, one other thing we're ingesting today, literally today, Ms. Gibson's been working on it, and I've been watching pictures come in, are our students' portraits, allowing us to deliver on the baseball card view of a student. Principals will be able to create data walls and have dialogues to identify students not just by name and by need off of a spreadsheet, but putting a face to the name, putting a face to the need. It's a critical touchstone to connect data to the human child, whose family trusts us to inspire and enable growth through meaningful and engaging learning experience. Last year, I showed you this picture of the Hank Aaron baseball card, and today I can show you what it actually looks like. The image is not of an actual student, clearly illustrative, but the view is otherwise a snapshot of a single student from last year. And notice, you see here, scores for GMA and STAR, posted grades, demographic behavior and attendance data. The dropdown on the right shows you just how far back we're working to full data pre-pandemic. Can't do it for everything, but where we can, we will. And that innocuous looking little student data, you know, link at the bottom left is actually rather powerful. This is the baseball card view of a kid. Clicking that student data button gives you the sports almanac chapter on that particular athlete, and their entire time here at City Schools and educator. This month, we're wrapping up data ingest, and we'll begin training for district leadership. Building leader training begins in October. Teacher training will occur on our professional learning day when we return from New Year's break in January. Lastly, a few process updates for you. I've spoken about interoperability within CSD, but last year and this year have been and will be major years for interoperability between us and states. The Georgia Department of Education has invested significant resources to modernize many of its systems. Last year, they launched a new portal for educators to access resources, rolled out a new physical fitness assessment on the same infrastructure, and completely rebuilt the state technology inventory tool. All three of these met with major challenges at launch, but that's not entirely unexpected, given that the DOE has over 800 school districts, slightly different setups between each and every one of us, and they prioritize minimizing the readiness workflows on the districts. CSD, we're glad we're important, successfully met all of the integration deadlines ahead of schedule. We've ruled with the bugs as DOE staff continues to stamp them out. But we have a big change coming to us this year. Before any of the that they launched last year began, DOE began working on modernizing how districts send our data to them. Now, we, in education and technology, we love our clever acronyms and weird names. This new state reporting system is called State Reporting System. It's built on a data exchange protocol called EdFi, and the vision for this, the vision is to move away from these discrete chunks of time where we're spending information to the state to a persistent connection. And that notion of a persistent connection really underlines the importance of what I had shared before about our data going in cleanly, correctly, and compliantly the first time. In order for us to be successful, that foundation of data governance is absolutely key. We're already transmitting some elements of student record via the state reporting system, and we anticipate a parallel transmission cycle to student class in March, both using new system and the incumbent file exchange. And although we are transmitting some data now through SRS, the new system does not yet have feature parity with the system it will ultimately replace. We are anxiously optimistic that these feature gaps, which critically help us identify errors or inconsistencies in our records, will emerge in short order. And we anticipate further challenges as the entire state undertakes this major transition over the next 12 to 18 months. Fortunately, we have district leadership that values our work around data governance, and we have excellent Wilson Center leaders who are in this work and working on this work to support schools and our maturing data governance and data culture, with those things will help us weather these challenges. Of note, there is no timeline yet for transitioning FTE to the state reporting system. FTE, as you know, is the cycle that determines our QVE funding. So I hope you all share my enthusiasm for the progress delivered and upcoming on data governance tools and processes. If there's a core theme I hope to leave you with, it's this, and you've heard us talk about interoperability for a while now. I've, I've chuckled at this election before, said it is the center of the bingo card from my boss. Whitaker has even said it too. But I hope what you also hear is that interoperability is also interdependence. Governance, tools, and processes, they don't just live in a silo. They're all manifestations of visionary leadership, sustained not only from Director Gibson, but by many of the directors and coordinators who are on that data governance team, and diligent work executed by talented, caring experts in schools and in the central office across the org charts, striving to take care of kids in a deliberate, strategic, sustainable way. Thank you, as always, for letting me share very nerdy things with you, and I'm happy to take your questions.
I, I love this. On slide 12, I just clarified a few things.
It remem, that's the overlay, the overlay version.
Oh, sorry, so that's the one with the sample student?
Yes.
And so this is ultimately something that a teacher or a parent could see when it's up and running?
We don't have parents' visibility into this roadmap yet. The best place for a parent to go and throw, see, most of this information is through the parent portal.
Okay.
But our teachers will have access to the students who are rostered to them, just their kids on their roster, building leaders will be able to see all the kids in their school.
Okay, so then, what's the difference between like Star Math, Fall, Winter, Spring, and then Mathematics?
Mathematics is, is their posted grade for the grade. And part of, thank you for asking the question, it's a really good question. Part of rolling this out for our building leaders and for our teachers will come to know kind of what that shorthand label translates into.
And then just one other thing, is I think the grade, those gray lines are not indication of like meaning proficiency, they're just part of the building process.
That is where I deliberately read that to the institution.
Okay.
Actually, there's an actual kid, it was the best way to get you an illustration was just a full real one, and scribble out the important information. But I'm sorry, it's that.
No, no, no.
What, what, what led to the RFP having to be pulled, and what did we change in order to be successful this time?
There was, so we got four responses then, and as we reviewed them, we had enough red flags across each and every one of them that we didn't have the confidence that they could do the work that we and they were particular to each vendor, but in the aggregate, and working in collaboration with some outside experts, former CFO for a very large school district, these folks are not, not ready for us. But seeing some of those gaps is an opportunity for us to go, be a little bit more, we're going to try to be more explicit, and anyone who submitted the first time is welcome to resubmit, and we're also going to take advantage of some of the networks that we get our consultants and our staff have to perhaps more broadly advertise it. It's possible that one of the compounding challenges was just timing initially RFP.
Yeah.
So we have made strides in interoperable data system governance, and we are on a precipice with that EduClimber, that we will reshape the conversations that are occurring in our professional learning community, and I'm certain all of the board members will be happy when the new ERP is in place, as it has implications for budget variance.
Thank you, Mr. Melton. I noticed that the public dashboard was available when we released our milestone scores last month, and I look forward to a repeat of that process when CCRPI is available this winter. Please introduce the next item.
Thank you, Chair Sultan. I would like to call on Mr. Jarvis Adams, Chief Operations Officer, to provide the annual capital plan.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Dr. Sultan, vice chair, esteemed board members, city representative Latra, and Superintendent Dr. Whitaker. I'm Jarvis Adams, Chief Operations Officer. Today, I will present to the school, to, I represent City Schools of the KDA Capital, Annual Capital Plan. Our work is anchored in strategic accelerator number four, operational efficiency and excellence. The goal here is to provide safe, reliable The goal here is to provide safe, reliable learning environments, deliver discipline on scope, schedule, and cost, and with clear accountability to the board and to our community. Tonight's update tells a clear story. What has been completed from the 2227 City Schools at Decatur local facilities plan, what remained outstanding, and what's new and near priority? Sorry. The priorities for this plan include HVAC systems, flooring, and other interior finishes, plumbing, electrical systems, and compliance with American Disabilities Act. The funding frame relies on ESGFLOPS through 2027 and on the capital, on the state capital outlay program. Where scopes are eligible, items such as synthetic turf are not eligible for state capital outlay, and therefore, for transparency, we have included an addendum of planned and completed projects to date. It is a living register that will update as bids are awarded and as work is closed out. By June 2027, we will complete a full crosswalk of all pertinent work against current inspections and against the facilities conditions assessment, so that every project line clearly shows its scope, status, cost, and related assessment or inspection item that it resolves. For clarity of terms, FLOPS is a voter-approved one-cent sales tax that funds capital projects. State capital outlay is Georgia School Facilities Funding Program that reimburses eligible scopes of work required local participation. The facilities condition assessment is an independent system-by-system review that establishes a baseline and helps us prioritize work. This chart comes from the 2022-2023 Facilities Condition Assessment, and it is a snapshot in time. Each bar shows a school's facilities condition index at that time. The facilities condition index compares the estimated cost to correct identified deficiencies to the current replacement value of a facility and is expressed as a percentage. The best way to read this is to understand a higher index indicates a larger backlog of needs. A lower index indicates fewer needs. The index is a planning tool, not a safety rating. We use it to prioritize investments, phase projects, and measure progress as work is At Beacon Hill Middle School, approximately 80% of the roof was replaced, and rooftop HVAC units were replaced, reducing corrective backlog. But we expect a lower index for Beacon Hill in the upcoming 2027 Facilities Condition Assessment, and that's what that red arrow represents. At Ours Elementary and Claremont Elementary, we installed a new roof, drain lines, and conducted plumbing modifications that lowered identified deficiencies and would be reflected as a lower index in the next assessment. At Decatur High School, several capital items have been addressed. The main building roof was replaced, the purchase of commercial food equipment for the cafeteria, and an updated culinary arts lab were completed. Exterior lights were replaced, HVAC systems were upgraded to rooftop units, better known as RTUs, and three dachy air conditioning units were added. The principal suite was renovated. Basement gym lights were replaced, the performing arts center theater seating was replaced, and the water heater was replaced. Collectively, these improvements decreased the corrective needs and should lower the index for the high school at the next assessment. It went on a park. Mechanical and plumbing reliability work has been performed, including the cooling tower, heat pumps, and the sewer lift pump. These items address core systems that drive the index and are expected to lower the index in the 2027 reassessment. The takeaway is that although this slide shows the baseline, the completed and in progress work is designed to move these bars down when we return with the 2027 update. Beacon Hill. Beacon Hill Middle School is prioritized for renovations and HVAC modifications with state capital outlay participation, and FLOPS were required. The minimum scopes include completing roof repairs, targeted flooring work, HVAC upgrades. Additional building needs include the baseboards around the flooring, a domestic water pump replacement, and the only item funded entirely with local dollars is the retrofit of the dust bowl, the play area. Re-love management will pull the permit in the next week or two. Once the permit is issued, we will solicit competitive quotes and select a vendor that provides the best value. These projects directly address systems that drive the index and are expected to lower Beacon Hill's index in the 2027 assessment. Ours Elementary is prioritized for renovations and HVAC modifications, with state capital outlay participation anticipated and FLOPS providing the local. Focus is a building-wide flooring renovation session. Included restrooms, controls, and commissions to improve reliability, comfort, and energy performance, along with the HVAC modification scope. These investments reduce identified deficiencies and are designed to lower Ours Index in the 2027 assessment. Since the spring of 2025, we have completed interior paint refreshes at Claremont Elementary, Ours, Glenwood, and Winona Park, installed new roofs at Claremont and Ours, placed auditorium seating at overhaul the weight room at Decatur High School, and completed and invested basement with restoration at the Kentucky Street Transportation Nutrition Depot. We cater all major and noisy work for fall break, Thanksgiving break, winter break, winter holiday breaks, spring break, and summer break. The school is in session, intrusive work is restricted to after hours, evenings, and weekends, coordinated for safety and access. This month, there are 21 HVAC rooftop units replacements taking place at College Heights Early Childhood Learning Center during the fall break. We are utilizing contractors for HVAC preventive maintenance at Decatur High School and Beacon Hill to protect reliability on our larger campuses. We are shifting from reactive fixes to preventive and transparent operations. Does direct to facilities planning and operations with own program and project oversight and key performance indicators. Coordinate preventive maintenance schedules and automated work orders by asset. Maintain the asset registry with quick response code histories, ensure quotes and purchase orders are attached to each job and project, and publish spin-by-school dashboards with documentation for state capital outlay reimbursement. We are also evaluating a computerized maintenance management system to strengthen project management, capital planning, preventive maintenance, asset tracking, work orders, dashboards, and reimbursement documentation. We're meeting with vendors now and will update the board on our direction before bringing any form of agreement, I mean, any form of recommendation into action. This concludes the capital plan update. Thank you for your continued support. I now open the floor to questions.
I just have one clarifying question.
Yes.
That, I'm looking at Slide 6, so that applies to another. So this is for, I believe, Ours, and it says capital outlay funding, 407899, subject to Georgia DOE approval, because that's, am I correct in saying that effectively, Georgia DOE, if it approves this, will fund that?
Suck it out of mouth.
Okay. Good. Okay. And that's it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
But just to follow up on that, the reason we don't do that for a number of the K2 schools on the north side is they don't meet the DOE thresholds.
So capital outlay, that is correct. We need to, we need to meet 200 students to be eligible for state reimbursement.
Got it. Then I was going to ask, so I'm really pleased to see us moving from emergency to preventative Do we carry insurance for some of these facilities, for some of the emergency repairs? I'm thinking about like roof damage and storms or things of that nature?
Or is it all sort of a capital outlet?
No, we do carry insurance through GSBA, and so the claim that we have right now is that a best is a basement upgrade at W Street Office.
Okay.
So we missed it on a tree falling on Westchester early on when I joined. But as I continue to go and learn more about risk management and how to manage incidents that happen.
Yeah, so that, the reason why I was asking is I know the data systems we're putting in place, ticket management systems, things like that should have built-in prompts for, you know, this is able to be reimbursed through insurance. I just want to make sure we're optimizing capital spend. If we're paying for the insurance, we should be using it.
Yes, for, through our true CMMS, we will be able to modernize a lot of our data and record keeping. You know, when the tree fell at Westchester, that was in the midst of that transition that we have at our, at that leadership level.
Absolutely. I do have one other question.
Yes.
According to Slide 4, so this was the facility condition index as of FY 2023, and it was from like smaller bar to larger bar, longer bar, and the longer bar means more needed, right? And then the red arrow is effectively saying, this is how much we've spent or what we've done to improve the condition of the facility using that fund since 2023 for Fire Mod and Beacon and the other ones with the river.
Yes. So essentially, roofing was a big problem in some of the schools, so replacing those roofs definitely moved that into.
Thank you.
I want to reiterate that we will have a third party conduct the facility condition assessment before we build the next facility plan for 2027, 2032, it sounds so far away. Also, the plan will be one that is bought for you as a board, just as the capital outlay is on the consent agenda for tonight. These are practices that should happen by a school system. Thank you, Mr. Adams, for your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. As a Beacon Hill parent, I'm all too familiar with that dust bowl. I just want you to, I think that was my child's single pain point on the principal advisory council, was that dust bowl. But I look forward to the progress made on all projects mentioned. Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the next presentation.
Thank you, Chair Sultan. Mr. Jarvis Adams, Chief Operations Officer, will remain for the next item. At the board's request, we will provide monthly updates on the new Early Childhood Learning Center and Decatur High School expansion plan. The update is not to be confused with the capital plan or the facilities plan. Those were the plans that were part of the previous presentation. This comprehensive approach to meeting the needs of our district is a all-in Decatur strategic plan, and specifically, strategic accelerator organizational effectiveness and excellence is what this presentation will provide.
Thank you. Good evening, or good afternoon again, Board Chair Dr. Sultan, vice chair Uts, team board members, city representative Botra, and superintendent Dr. Whitaker. I'm still Jarvis Adams, providing updates on the new ECL team at Decatur High School expansion. As you know, our work is aligned with the all-in Decatur strategic plan, which emphasizes the emphasis on strategic accelerator number four, operational efficiency and excellence. The goal is to deliver safe, reliable, and student-centered learning environments with discipline on scope and with transparent accountability to the board and our community. Up next on the new ECL team, we are proceeding with the single-story design on the current site plan. We are still targeting a December groundbreaking. Our procurement strategy remains very disciplined, and we are holding to a guaranteed maximum price target under $22 million, with cost-saving alternatives prioritized to save within budget. Current pricing also carries $150,000 solar allowance identified during 50% design development. Decatur High School campus update, we have collected furniture, fixture, and equipment assessments from program specialists and teachers to inform our early schematic design. This is our calendar of the next four months. These are key and near-term milestones. Yesterday, September 8th, we were happy that parish received a final scope and bed set transmitted to Parish Construction. Today, we began receiving early preliminary findings of the traffic study. We'll be able to provide a slight update on that. We're still dealing with angle and parallel parking decision-making along the bike path. On this week, September 12th, we're excited that the land service permit will be submitted and the traffic study will be completed. September 29th, a guaranteed maximum price package will be sent out by Parish Construction. And on October 8th, a guaranteed maximum price documents will be delivered to the City Schools at Decatur team, meaning on October 14th, during the board meeting, the GMP will be presented to the Board of Education. On October 30th, a building permit will be submitted to the City of Decatur. In December, we will maintain a groundbreaking date, and we're also hiring for some. On other tracks, we have the DOE final documents will be submitted after October 30th. We will also begin registration for LEED 4, LEED 4 certification, and target a May 2027 certification submitted. And we will complete the early learning license application by December 2025, certificate of occupancy target for May 2027, leaving a 60-day schedule in the furniture. Key features include a storefront facade and overall building length under the 400 feet, street parking, and reduced on-site parking. The design modifications directly address concerns raised by the City of Decatur and the board in need for any bearers. Our parking discussion is still in the early stages with the City of Decatur. We would evaluate safety, operations, bicycle facility integration, and cost. We would not advance a specific geometry into simple drawing or the land service permit until that discussion concludes. Early traffic findings indicate on-site queuing is sufficient, but project volume is well below typical comparison. We will continue to coordinate details that support safety, cost, and schedule. Our directive is to hold the note, keeping the GMP under $22 million from targeted refinements. Current focus items include confirming street parking, optimizing the cafeteria and the wing loc, office wing location, refining storefront tree lifts on West Trinity, and limiting site signage to one monument sign. For the play area, we will integrate an Eastern Continental theme inspired by the rare corridor through Decatur. The educational concept highlights that the rainfall on one side ultimately flows to the Atlantic Ocean, and on the other side to the Gulf of Mexico, creating a play-based learning experience within the approved budget and schedule. Our immediate next steps, we will continue coordination with the City of Decatur on the angle versus, angle versus parallel parking question. Once the selection is made, we will carry that selected approach into the civil set and the land service permit. We will issue an updated milestone schedule tied to future board meeting updates. We will present traffic findings and the parking approach during October's board update. We will also continue LEED version 4 registration, license preparation, and staffing and opening planning, allowing approximately 60 days pre-opening for license. For Decatur High School, we are validating Decatur High School spaces against current educational standards and following teacher and program from their texture input into our early schematic design. From a fiscal standpoint, holding the Early Childhood Learning Center guaranteed maximum price under $22 million helps reserve capacity for future Decatur High School work. That concludes the Early Childhood Learning Center in Decatur High School Expansion update. Thank you for your time and engagement. I will pause here, but welcome to the questions.
One, thank you for, um, entitling this E T L C end high school because I feel like a lot of the questions that I get are just specific to E T L C. And while I know we all learned in June that each project is interdependent, I, I've found that it can be confusing at times, so thank you so much. On slide four, what does, um, and then another thing I think I've learned through this entire process is the, um, civic and city education that people are getting because there's so many different entities and there's this permitting process and this application process. So what exactly in the November twenty twenty-five at the top is the permit feedback from the city?
Oh, sorry. So we're gonna submit a, a per, building permit in October. And part of that process, the city won't, it won't give an immediate yes or no. They're gonna give some feedbacks, some things for us to consider, some things that they would like to see. And so we're gonna take that feedback and we're gonna work through that feedback to get to the yes.
Just to be specific, things like erosion management and runoff and how you're gonna stage stuff at the site. It's not feedback of should this be built or not built? It's these are the things we need to see you control over the construction to make sure that, okay, just make sure the public understands.
Right, right. Thank you.
And so this, um, last question is referring, I think, to slide six? The one with the design? Okay, that one.
Sorry.
Slide five.
Sorry.
So just wanted to make sure I'm clear here. So there's the new public facing entry, and that's a new feature since the August board meeting.
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, what I remember at the August board meeting is hearing how, um, I think the chair and vice chair, you know, kinda met with city commissioners and the city didn't have enough input or there's a concern here. So that specific modification is demonstration of adapting to, um, feedback given. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. Now, last question though is, is there any design modification? Because one of my biggest concerns has been everyone who appears to have not known how to get input earlier. Are there any other opportunities for, um, the community to get input on the design? Not on whether this should be built or not, but on the design itself, like the city commissioners were able to.
No, uh, I will, I will answer that. At this point, the design is pretty, uh, settled. As we begin to talk about other types of colors and things of that nature, typically, once you bring the principal on, there's additional, um, decisions that are made in the branding and colors and the theme of the school. It, it's a little, that's, those would be the next decision.
Thank you.
What are those circle numbers down the bottom? Six, six, eight, 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 six, four, four.
No.
So that's just, that's, that's where the parking.
Yeah, it's the number of spaces.
So that, that is just number of spaces with kinda like green islands or whatever between them. But that's, that's all still a little bit in flux given for angled versus parallel parking question.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yep.
And then can you talk a little bit more about that angled versus parallel parking conversations that are having?
So gotta give you where we are with information. So if we go with parallel parking, looking at about eighteen spaces, which will reduce on-site parking, both will reduce on-site parking. Reverse angle parking is what the D O T, we did angle parking and we need to reverse in. So essentially, they're gonna pass it and back into the, we're reversing to their parking space. So when they leave, they just go, saving parents or whoever's driving, right into the floor trap.
And you said that's the D O T's preference? Because we also heard that that was safer for children to drop off.
So, and that's, that was part of the, why is their preference? Uh, just because they've done the research. They just found that to be the best way, if it's gonna be angle parking. Uh, however, if it is angle parking, it will push the building south. We'll reduce green, even though we won't have as much on-site parking, it will reduce the green space. If we go to parallel parking, you're gonna reduce parking on-site, not as much as the angle, but you end up with about forty-five percent green space versus the forty point nine. So parallel parking adds green space. Angle parking decreases on-site parking. More.
And to clarify, that is gonna be staff parking, right? Or where in?
Permitted.
That's permitted parking. And so where in this design are the babies dropped off? So if, where do you drop the? So, okay, so where, it's where the numbers are?
That's the, that's the entry, that parking lot is where parents are fully into dropping.
Yeah, and so then where, so parents can drop off, but then staff would park in those same, in those same areas as well?
Yeah, yeah, but then you have street parking.
Street parking.
Street parking on West Street.
Okay, so there will be designated, because I think, I don't know, I'm, I'm not the best parker in the world, but that, I'm very intimidated by backing up and having to back into a spot, but I can't parallel park either. But, um, so, but either way, I'm just, I, whatever it is, I just wanna make sure it's, it would be, it's functionally easy for somebody who has to get up and get out with like, you know, a six-month-old and all that kinda thing. And I don't know, it's, whatever it is, as long as it's functionally easy, they can get to the front of the building.
So we're thinking, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I was going to say the staff more than likely will be the persons that are parking on the street.
Okay.
So they, and that's where that permit is allowable. So staff will be issued a decal very similar to like you, um, to say you are allowed to park here because they are a member of that staff. Along that street is how, that's why it would be permitted parking. Uh, know that if there was a space there in the middle of drop-off and pickup, if you would like to reverse angle or parallel into it, you could. But that's really more so what the part that is further south by chewing way is for, for our actual family.
Gotcha.
Can I clarify that now to non-campees? I saw it, it says, um, public facing entry up top, that pink, so you've got these numbered, um, parking areas that James had asked about.
Right.
And you've got the pink square at the bottom, but then you have like a pink rectangle at the top, and I did get to the public facing entry. So must the drop-off be where the public facing entry?
No, thanks, thanks, Cal.
Ah, okay.
Right, so you know, as you're going up Cal, you see the school, but you can still go in, so thank, on those lines.
Just to be explicit for the public, these modifications that we've made in the last few weeks now have this building not requiring any variance.
Right.
Unports with, with what the city's standard requirements would have been.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Next month's update will focus on finance, as we will bring the resolution to request the Public Facilities Authority to issue the bonds to the Board of Education for approval. November's update will focus on programming, and we will close out twenty twenty-five with an update on human resources in December.
Thank you for the update, Mr. Adams. It's great to hear that the preliminary traffic study results puts us in a strong position, and we look forward to our ne- next community engagement session, which will be on Monday, September fifteenth, at Beacon Hill Middle School from six-thirty to eight-thirty P M. Dr. Whitaker, please introduce the next presentation.
Thank you, Chair Sultan. I would like to call on Dr. Lonita Broom, our Chief Financial Officer, to present the F Y twenty-seven budget calendar for discussion.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board Chair Dr. Sultan, team members of the board, student representative Fatra, and Superintendent Dr. Whitaker. Though it seems like only yesterday we were building the fiscal year twenty-six budget, the time has come for us to begin the preparation and timeline of building the fiscal year twenty-seven budget. The Finance Department operates based on the district's four strategic accelerators with a specific focus on Accelerator Number Four, Organizational Effectiveness and Excellence by ensuring financial transparency and sustainability. We are pleased to announce that Lane Davidson, an eighth grader at Beacon Hill Middle School, original artwork was selected for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget book cover. And City Schools of Decatur retake pride in showcasing student talent and interest in the arts, while also supporting school programs and teachers who offer a variety of creative artistic learning experiences. A heartfelt thank you to Lane for contributing this beautiful artwork, which will serve as a reminder of the students represented behind the numbers. Picture left to right, Beacon Hill Middle School art teacher Sarah Nathaniel and Lane Davidson. The twenty-five, twenty-six budget book is available on the district's finance website and will be submitted to the Association of School Business Officials International, also referred to as ASBO, and the Government Finance Officers Association, also referred to as G F O A, for consideration for award number two. The fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-seven preliminary budget calendar, as always, starts with community input on their, on the budget, on their budget priorities and our feedback on the current budget. There is a link on the Finance Department Budget section of the district's website where we continuously ask, seek community input and feedback on the budget. Currently, the link is set up for the twenty-six budget. However, as we begin the budget process for fiscal year twenty-seven, the link will be updated for the fiscal year twenty-seven budget and will be available on the budget section of the website in the district's main page for the community to provide feedback. I respond to each comment submitted and frequently have follow-up calls meetings with the community. The board receives a summary of all budget feedback from stakeholders on a monthly basis. Today, the fiscal year twenty-seven preliminary budget calendar is presented for discussion to make any modifications as determined by the board. The fiscal year twenty-seven budget calendar will be presented at the October fourteenth board meeting for adoption. Additionally, the current school allotment guidelines for fiscal year twenty-six will also be presented at the October fourteenth board meeting for review. At November's work session, superintendent will discuss the fiscal year twenty-seven budget parameters and priorities. These discussions will serve as the guidelines for development of fiscal year twenty-seven budget. At November's board meeting, I will present the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget review, which will include the un-audited fiscal year twenty-five actual expenditures and revenues and the un-audited fiscal year twenty-five ending fund balance, which will be the beginning fund balance of fiscal year twenty-six and will provide us with a more accurate projection of fiscal year twenty-seven beginning fund balance. Also in November, the fiscal year twenty-seven school allotment guidelines and fiscal year twenty-six salary and benefit comparisons to surrounding districts will be presented at the board retreat. In December, fiscal year twenty-six mid-year, fiscal year twenty-seven school allotment guidelines and fiscal year twenty-seven budget parameters and priorities will be presented to the board for approval. The internal auditors will present the fiscal year twenty-five financial audit results at the January board meeting. The tax commissioner and city manager will present to the board in February. I will also present the five-year financial review. A presentation on the use of federal and state grants and slot funds will be presented to the board at the March work session. The preliminary fiscal year twenty-seven budget draft number one will be presented at the March board meeting. The Board of Education for Community Meeting will be held on March twenty-fifth at Oakhurst Elementary School. The budget community meeting will allow the community to verbally provide feedback on the budget, ask questions, and receive answers. Based on feedback from the community on the preliminary fiscal year, year twenty-seven budget draft number one and guidance from the superintendent, I will revise the budget and submit fiscal year twenty-seven budget draft number two at the April fourteenth board meeting. A Board of Education Community Meeting is scheduled for April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, and this will be another opportunity for the board to hear from the community prior to the final approval of the budget. As required by the state, there will be two public budget hearings in May at a special power board meeting to allow the public to comment on the budget. After the community meeting and public budget hearings, the board will vote on the fiscal year twenty-seven tentative budget and tentative military on May twelfth. In June, the board will vote on the final budget. There will also be three public mus, military hearings followed by the final adoption of the property tax military. The dates for the military hearings are contingent upon receipt of tax digest information from the tax office. The budget book is scheduled to be printed by August thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Again, the budget calendar with any modification after today's discussion will be presented to the board at next month's October meeting for approval. I will be happy to respond to any questions or provide clarification as soon as possible.
Uh, just that five-year fiscal review, is that projections or is that past five years?
It will be actual fiscal year twenty-five will be budget, fiscal year twenty-six will be. No, fiscal year twenty-five will be actual because it will be after the project.
Uh, so, so is it twenty-five to thirty, or is it?
It will be twenty, no, it'll be twenty.
That's what it is, okay, so it's, it's past, gotcha, all right.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Board members, we anticipate receiving a tax digest in time to inform the budgeting process now that we've moved the tentative approval back one month. Reflecting on the past two years, that additional month will help us.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Broom. I agree, budget development is a year-round process. We look forward to this coming next month on the consent agenda. There being no further business, this work session is adjourned at four forty-one P M. We will recess and return at five fifteen.
Mm-hmm, that's what we have.
Five fifteen?
Yeah, we'll do five fifteen.
Five fifteen, sure, begin our regular board meeting.
They do do that.
We will now call this meeting to order at five fifteen P M. We ask that you silence all cell phones at this time. We will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. At this time, I ask that everyone join, join me in a brief moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Now I ask that all who are able to please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to this land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our mission is to inspire and enable student growth through meaningful and engaging learning experiences supported by highly qualified and caring educators in a safe and inviting environment. Board members, are there any revisions to the?
I have a suggestion and question. There's one item on the consent agenda.
Is there a revision to the agenda?
Oh, sorry, no.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
The move.
Uh, Board Member Utz makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Board Member Hernan seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Our next agenda item is the approval of minutes from previous board meetings. Do I have a motion to approve August's regular board, board retreat and special call of meeting minutes? Board Member Anderson makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Board Member Jonathan Davis seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Dr. Whitaker, I see we have some people who have joined up. Do we have any recognitions today?
Yes, Chair Sultan. To facilitate tonight's recognition, I'd like to call upon Dr. Deputy Superintendent Karen Newton Scott.
To Board Chair Dr. Sultan, Vice Chair Utz, team members of the board.
To board chair Dr. Sultan, Vice Chair Utz, team members of the Board, Superintendent Lieutenant Dr. Whitaker, and our deputy vice president, Phil Batra. This evening, I am honored to present four rest commissions highlighting the achievements of Decatur High School and Beacon Middle School. As we honor each group, please do not take your seats. Instead, we'd like you to stage along the wall to my left and your right for a photo opportunity with our board members. First, we proudly recognize Junebug Brown. Come on up. Junebug Brown and her teacher Randall Archer, Mr. Archer. Junebug Brown and her teacher Randall Archer are being recognized for an exceptional accomplishment. Junebug's project was named a finalist in the International Freshwood Competition organized by the Association of Woodworking and Frenchie Suppliers. Her work showcased in Las Vegas this July earned an honorable mention and brought national recognition to our CTE program. This achievement reflects both Junebug's remarkable talent and Mr. Archer's mentorship. And I believe this is your work here on this place where I'm taught. Thank you. Turning to leaders, Kate Usovin, come on up. Kate Usovin represented CSE at the twenty-twenty-five Youth Lead Jordan Summit on July seventeenth through the eighteenth at the University of Georgia. The summit hosted by the J.W. Fanning Institute in partnership with T.C.A. brought together rising juniors and seniors from across the state to build leadership skills. Uh, their leadership skills form connections and explore issues facing Jordan's youth. Kate's participation reflects the strength of our students' voices and the bright future they are helping to shape for our community and beyond. Congratulations, Kate. Next, high school is just up to the side. I want to invite Principal Glenn Up. Next, we will celebrate the arts. Lane Davidson, come on up. Lane is an eighth grader at Beacon Hill Middle School, and her original artwork was selected for the cover of the studenteef award. Twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six budget book. This publication highlights district's history, fiscal priorities, and expenditures. And Lane's design reminds us of the students at the heart of those numbers. Remember, we're proud of the opportunity our school provides to nurture artistic expression. Congratulations, Lane. Hey, Dr. Broome, come back. Okay, finally, we will recognize Decatur High School's teacher Courtney Phillips. David Custer. Mary Souther. Courtney Phillips won the grand prize of ninety-two thousand dollars. Let me know when it's. She showed the One Percent Club, which aired July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Joining her on the show were her colleagues David Custer and Mary Souther, all advanced to the final round. Together, they represented CSE with excellence, showcasing both their intellect and camaraderie. But Phillips' win is a wonderful reminder of the outstanding educators in our district. Thank you for joining me in celebrating these accomplishments that continue to make us proud in CSE. I now invite our board members and Dr. Whitaker to join us for photos, this honor.
Congratulations.
If y'all want to go on my trivia, much more people can. Trying to get a couple of trivia ringers.
Thank you. Congratulations.
We want to bring the tape.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Nice. Wow.
Really?
Yeah, she's a heck of an answer. Yeah. You know I'm going to ask the question when we're up here.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a commitment.
It is commitment.
Yes.
It is a commitment.
Yeah, do you have, let me see if anyone can hold. When I come hold the book.
Yeah, Lily, come here. That's the bird coming up.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Yes.
Did everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, Mia in the middle.
Oh, look at you all.
Still doing the turn thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, can you wait one second? Mia turn in the middle.
Oh, yeah.
There you go. That's where, I was counting, sorry. Yeah.
She likes.
Yeah, if, okay. You don't, you don't need it.
Oh, in the picture.
Okay, you don't need it.
Okay. Of course. All right, thank you, Mrs. Newton Scott. Dr. Whitaker, do you have a superintendent's report today?
Yes, Chair Sultan. Good evening. We have officially completed our first month of school, and our students' high energy and engagement continues. In September, we will recognize several observances. The National Literacy Month Observatory promotes reading, writing, and lifelong learning. Learners of all ages are encouraged to read, visit libraries, and engage in language-rich literacy activities to develop those skills. Our schools will host several activities throughout the month to increase awareness about literacy. Beginning Monday, September the twenty-second, CSE will recognize Georgia Reads Day at the beginning of Dyslexia Awareness Month with a week-long variety of engaging literacy and awareness events. The week will kick off with a read aloud, a read aloud by me, followed by a Georgia Public Broadcasting live, livestream featuring Georgia Reads coach Malcolm Mitchell. Schools will participate in a Bucket of Books Drive, collecting gently-used books for children Read Atlanta. Community involvement will be encouraged through guest reader opportunities, including parents, staff, and our Board of Education members. Students will engage in the Rock for Dyslexia activity by painting awareness-themed rocks. The week will continue with another read aloud by Dr. Whitaker and a Go for Red Dyslexia Day, where students and staff are encouraged to support the Global Dyslexia Awareness Campaign by wearing red. This month, we also recognize National Attendance Month, which aims to raise awareness about the importance of regular school attendance to student achievement. Theme this year is Here Today, Ready for Tomorrow. National Arts and Education Week, which celebrates dance, theater, music, literature, design, media. Our arts will take place September eighth through the twelfth. And we are proud of our award-winning arts programs offered in CSE and celebrate the talented teachers and coaches who enhance student experiences and opportunity through the arts. I think we just celebrated a couple of them today. At the school year, as the school year progresses, I want to recognize that amid our celebrations and achievements, our community's activities are occurring locally, nationally, and globally. While the district may not always issue a formal statement, I want to reassure you that as tragedies, conflicts, and situations beyond the control, beyond our control emerge, City Schools of Decatur remains resolute in supporting the needs of our students while upholding the values of the Decatur community. I want to reiterate that the safety of our students and staff remains our highest priority. Families should expect timely communication during school and district-wide incidents and disruptions to the, to our normal operations. Collectively, we can and must maintain the safety of our school community. The CSE Safety and Security Team encourages all students, staff, and families to learn the standard emergency protocols of hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter to assist us in our emergency preparedness. And as always, if you see something suspicious, please say something immediately. During the twenty-twenty-five legislative session, the state legislator allocated funding to assist school systems in improving physical safety measures. At the State Board of Education meeting held on August the twentieth this year, the Board, State Board approved mental health grant funding for school districts. Based on a state-defined formula, the funding will ensure that each middle and high school receives twenty thousand dollars. CSE is pleased to announce that we will receive forty thousand dollars. This crucial funding will enhance and expand mental and behavioral health support, specifically in grades six through twelve. As with other grant funds, specific stipulations exist regarding using this, this money. The state has been clear that these funds are intended for direct mental and behavioral health services for students in grades six through twelve. The services must align with the Georgia Multi-Tierred System of Support. We call that, uh, GAMTSS, and may include crisis intervention. GAMTSS is a data-driven multi-tiered prevention system designed to meet holistic needs of students by implementing a continuum of tiered support. It relies on academic, behavioral, and well-being data to guide decision-making. It is important to note that funds cannot be used to purchase interventions, assessments, or other materials. Funds cannot be used to cover training for staff. Providing these services, the grant money must be supplement, and it must supplement existing mental health services, not replace them. To identify students' needs and determine the best support, CSE will utilize the data results from our BASK III Behavioral and Emotional Screening Scale. We commonly know, call this the BEST. Our universal screening for social, emotional, and behavioral needs, substance abuse referrals. Also, our Tier Three referrals and chronic discipline referrals. Depending on individual student needs, some may receive in-person services from a mental health provider, while others may access services through state-approved telehealth provider. The district team is actively engaged in the procurement of these services. In compliance with the grant guidelines, CSE must provide a mid-year report to Godot, Georgia Department of Education, detailing the services and activities. This report will include the number of students that have been served at each tier and specific funding allocated for various services. Each month, the administration brings policies to the Board for recommendation and discussion. The Board of Education establishes the policies that govern the district's operations. Under the superintendent's leadership, the administration is committed to creating regulations after the Board has approved the policy. Regulations provide the specific guidelines on implementing and enforcing policies. Last month, thank you, Board, you approved policy JV, student absences. A draft regulation is being finalized and will be brought to the Superintendent Advisory Council for feedback this month. The final regulation will be presented as information at our October Board meeting. At this time, Deputy Superintendent Karen Newton Scott will present beginning-of-year STAR data for students.
Good evening, Board Chair Dr. Sultan, Vice Chair Utz, esteemed Board members, students, Board representatives, Batra and Superintendent Dr. Gina Whitaker. Today, we are going to take a closer look at our fall STAR growth results. What's powerful about STAR is that it doesn't just give us a snapshot of where students are right now. It also tells us how much progress they are making over time. By looking at both achievements and growth, we're able to see not just what students know, we're able to see not just what students know, but how far they're moving each year. This gives us a much fuller picture of how our instruction is working for different groups of students. Remember Jane from last school year? Last fall, Jane began with a score of 853, and this fall has scored a 983 at the beginning of the school year. She scored higher than 90% of students who also started with a score of 853, placing her at the 90th percentile for growth. Yay, Jane. Now, here's John. John also scored 853 in the fall of last school year and has begun this school year increasing his score to 865. He increased by 12 points, which we celebrate, but many students who started with a score of 853 grew more than John did, placing him at the 20th percentile for growth. Jane's results are categorized as high achievement and high growth because she performed higher than most of the norm group and showed strong progress. John's results, on the other hand, are categorized as high achievement and low growth. He is still performing at a high level, but his year-to-year progress is lower compared to the norm group. This distinction is important as we analyze results. Being identified as low growth does not mean a student is low achieving. Many of our students are meeting or exceeding grade-level standards. Yet, their growth trajectory signals a need for continued attention to ensure they keep advancing. So let's look at how this plays out across different grade groups. We will begin with results for early literacy. We assess all pre-K through 3rd students three times a year in the fall, winter, and spring because early identification is key. Frequent monitoring allows us to step in quickly if a student needs supportive and challenge those who are ready to move ahead. This also aligns to Senate Bill 48, which requires universal dyslexia screening for all kindergarten through 3rd grade. STAR Early Literacy fulfills this requirement and ensures we are meeting both state law and our own commitment to early literacy. This fall, we assessed 1,149 K-3 students, and 83% performed at or above the 40th percentile. This is a very strong starting point. With a full year of STAR assessment now behind us, we can look at student growth not just within a school year, but also across years. In our fall-to-fall data, 939 students took the early literacy assessment in both Fall 2024 and Fall 2025, and 74% demonstrated typical or high growth. This exceeds the national benchmark of 65%, reflecting the hard work of our students and teachers. At the same time, 244 of our K-3 students are categorized as low growth. To better understand this, we broke the group into three achievement bands: Low Achievement, Low Growth, which is below 40th percentile; Typical Achievement, Low Growth; and High Achievement, Low Growth. This breakdown shows us who is both below proficiency and not growing, who is meeting average performance but not making expected progress, and even which high-achieving students are experiencing low growth. This helps us target support so that every child, whether struggling on grade level or advanced, continues to make meaningful progress. Now that we have this information and can drill down to see which students are represented in each group, teachers and leaders can also use STAR to access individualized focus skills and resources. STAR suggests specific next steps for every student, making it possible to promote growth at every performance level we saw on the previous slide. An example of this report is presented here on the right for kindergarten. In addition to this resource, all our elementary teachers have robust literacy resources through programs such as foundations, does write readers, and other decodable texts like D O's. So STAR Early Literacy is designed for our youngest learners measuring foundational skills. However, STAR Reading is administered to all 2nd through 12th grade students, and it measures more advanced reading skills, including vocabulary, comprehension, and text analysis. So now, let's take a look at STAR Reading for grades 2 through 5. Here, the information is organized the same as the previous slide. We assessed students this fall and compared results from fall to fall. We found that 290 of the 1,255 students who took the assessment outcomes were in the low-growth area. What stands out is that the number of high achievers showing low growth is increasing, which tells us that while many students are maintaining high achievement, we must keep an eye on annual growth. This also suggests a need to ensure that enrichment and extension opportunities are challenging enough to promote continued progress, not just... For grades 6 through 8, the data is also organized in the same way, and what we noticed is a clear trend as students move into the upper grades. The number of students who are high achieving but demonstrating low growth increases, yet our achievement remains stable. This pattern suggests that while many middle school students are reaching or exceeding proficiency, they may not be consistently making the level of progress we would expect year to year. As students get older, it becomes increasingly important to provide rigorous, engaging learning opportunities that stretch their thinking and push them beyond grade-level expectations. Without targeted enrichment and challenge, even our strongest students risk plateauing rather than continuing growth. At the high school level, the numbers stand out even more. We see a higher concentration of students who are high achieving but demonstrating low growth. High school presents a unique challenge because students often perceive the impact of STAR data differently than younger students. Many may not see the assessment as directly connected to their grade or future opportunities. This means that additional digging is required to fully understand the story behind the data. We must triangulate STAR results with classroom performance, interim assessment, fourth grade, teacher observations, and so on, in order to accurately identify the names and the needs. This highlights the importance of engaging high school students in meaningful conversations about their data, helping them see its relevance and connecting it to their long-term academic goals. The same supports can be found within the STAR platform to assist our oldest students who are tackling more advanced literacy. For example, is what the output might look like for a 9th grader. In addition to the guidance provided within STAR, we also have curricular resources such as Goodmystum, Oaknissland, and the Middle School, Freckle, and Lalelo, which offer digital tools and instructional support to help teachers extend learning, differentiate for students, and challenge those who require that. Together, these resources create a comprehensive system for supporting literacy growth across all grade levels. Now, we turn to STAR Math, which is administered to all K through 12th grade students in C S D. Just as STAR Reading, this assessment projects proficiency on the state math test and tracks student growth over time. By pairing growth data with achievement levels, teachers and leaders can identify where students are failing and where targeted support is needed. For K-5, we continue to see the same trend of exceeding the national norm with the majority of our students achieving typical or high growth. One consistent pattern across math and reading is that about 25% of student outcomes in the low-growth category are from our average-performing students. This indicates that while these students are performing on or near grade level, they can benefit from accelerated learning as well. In contrast, the percentages of students in the low achievement-low growth and high achievement-low growth fluctuate from year to year, suggesting variability in the way students at the ends of the spectrum are being supported and are performing. For middle school, we again see a consistent pattern of about 25% of low-growth falling in the typical achievement category. There continues to be an increase in the number of high-achieving students who are experiencing low growth. This mirrors the trend we observed in reading, where many students maintain high performance but are not demonstrating the expected year-to-year progress. At the high school level, we see similar patterns as well, making it essential to, again, triangulate the data, STAR results, class performance, grades, teacher input, to identify students accurately by name and need. This work connects directly to graduation readiness, course success, and post-secondary progression. So across all grade levels, the pattern that emerges is that low growth appears in every group: low performing, average, and high achieving. We must celebrate... Excuse me, we just celebrated remarkable achievement on our state test, and we must be equally intentional about growth to ensure every student makes meaningful progress year to year. So what does this mean for our classrooms? Our instruction must be differentiated, flexible, and strategic. This means we have two jobs. Number one, we need to lift up the students who are behind and accelerate their progress. Number two, we also need to make sure our high-achieving students are continuing to grow and are challenged in meaningful ways. Principals have already completed the STAR analysis to identify students showing low growth, and with their leadership teams, they verify the needs using multiple data sources. Leaders and instructional coaches are partnering with teaching teams to name and execute clear actions to improve outcomes. We have supports in place to guide implementation of the Instructional Action Plan, monitor progress, and adjust as needed. At the same time, we are continuing to train and support teachers in using STAR data effectively. Growth will be closely monitored throughout the year, especially for students swag with low growth. And at the end of the day, our goal is that every child grows, every child learns, and every child is supported in doing so. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and thank you for addressing the older students. Because that was the trend I noticed, that as students got older, whether it was English or math, or reading or math, you know, middle school, a higher percentage of high achieving but low growth. And I don't know if this is also the interoperable data system. So I know there's student growth for like E S Ps and milestones. This is specific to student growth for our STAR tests, right? Will there be a time at which those would intersect? Because I know you were talking about how, you know, we've got to look at different factors with the high school students because if there's not a grade, there's motivation. But eventually, will those two intersect to see what student growth looks like across the board?
That's part of the work that we do at the school level. I will say, bringing STAR on last year and understanding how they align growth through the projections for the state assessment has been our learning curve. Because we don't want to make assumptions that aren't accurate, and so that's the work that we're digging into.
So then just one follow-up. So it started with Jane and the other guy. And I'm guessing the student growth is specific to that student?
Yes, the illustration just shows Jane and John at the same starting point. But if a student started at a different point, part of projecting will be different.
So there wouldn't be a benefit then? Is this the third year we're using STAR?
This is not.
Second year, okay. So we don't have enough then to see... Like, I was just looking at math compared to reading, and what you start seeing is like 60% of the students on the reading are at the high achieving, right? But math, we're pretty much at 50% it looks like for all the grade levels. So at some point then, is there just comparison of cohort or the test? Uh, we can get that, uh, wow, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Newton-Scott. Finally, I invite all stakeholders to mark your calendars for two upcoming superintendent listening sessions. The first one is scheduled for October 2nd from 5:30 to 6:30 at the Decatur Housing Authority Community Resource Center. The second will be held on October 9th from 5:30 to 6:30 P M. at Tally Street Upper Elementary School. That completes my report.
Thank you. On behalf of the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education, I appreciate your in-person and online presence for our September Board meeting. We join Dr. Whitaker and the administration in underscoring the fact that the safety of students and staff is the top priority of every school district. Recent tragic events served as a poignant reminder of the vital role we all play in ensuring the safety of our school community. If you ever see or hear something suspicious, please say something. In addition to safety, we continue to appreciate the school community engagement in celebrating our schools and recognizing our monthly observances. Dr. Whitaker, who celebrates a milestone birthday this month, recognized literacy, attendance, and the arts. September is also the beginning of National Hispanic Heritage Month. The theme for 2025 is collective heritage, honoring the past, inspiring the future. Beginning September 15th through October 15th, National Hispanic Heritage Month recognizes the contributions and influences of Hispanic Americans to the history, culture, and achievements of the United States. Beginning, during today's pre-work, the Board continued our book study on modern-day strategies for community engagement: How to Effectively Build Bridges Between People and the Bottom Line. We then provided input on a state-required policy, the use of electronic devices by students, and potential new policies regarding facilities. There were four presentations during the work session. The first was an overview of interoperable data systems, which is being built to provide insight into the district's student data around attendance, academics, behavior, and demographics. This will enable the administration and school leaders to meet the specific needs of every student. The following presentation reviewed the progress of the Annual Capital Plan, the five-year plan that began in 2022 for the entire district. Today, we discuss the priorities that are scheduled for the final two years of this plan. We are also pleased to receive an update on the new Early Childhood Learning Center and the expansion of Decatur High School, which the administration will now provide monthly updates for the duration of the planning process. This presentation was followed by an overview of the proposed budget calendar for 2027. All of today's pre-work and work session presentations are available on the district's website and assembly. In addition to high-quality learning, our schools provide a variety of programs and events. One particular upcoming event I want to highlight is the annual DHS 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony, which will be held this Thursday at 8:30 a.m. at the high school. The ceremony will be hosted by the J R O T C and open to the community. Please check your school newsletters and C S D Weekly to remain abreast of all the upcoming events and activities. I also want to remind the public and personally invite you to the Board's upcoming Fall Community Meeting on Monday, September 15th, starting at 6:30 P M. at Beacon Hill Middle School. The meeting will be held in the Media Center. Board community meetings provide opportunities for the public to ask questions directly to the Board and receive immediate responses. The topic of this meeting will be C S D's 2025 Comprehensive Capital Improvement Proposal. Additionally, stakeholders will be able to provide input on the district's future building utilization plans as a result of local and national enrollment trends. That concludes my remarks for this evening. Board members, do any of you have any thoughts you wish to share? Okay. All right, Board, we'll now move into the consent agenda items, which include monthly items... This will be a motion to accept the consent agenda in totality. Dr. Whitaker, do we have a monthly financial report?
Yes, Chair Sultan, Dr. Lunita Broom, Chief Financial Officer, will present the monthly financial report.
Good evening. The July 2025 financial report's definition of function codes are located in the summary. The finance department operates based on the district's four strategic accelerators, with a specific focus on accelerator number four, organizational excellence and excellence through financial transparency. July is the first month of the fiscal year 2026 budget. The board approved a general fund budget of $111,858,374 in May. The district has $401,419 in rollover grants from fiscal year '25 and has been awarded $88,912 in new grants for fiscal year '26. The combined grant total of $490,430 increases the general fund budget to $112,348,805. The grants are state-awarded grants, state grants of funds allocated from the state for specific purposes, as listed in the box to the right titled "Grant Rollover and New Grants." The grant revenue funds are listed in section 3800 of the grant George Department of Education on the general fund financial report. The listed state grants are required to be budgeted in the general fund. As of July 2025, the district collected 25% or approximately $27.5 million of the budgeted revenue, which is 10% more than what was collected this time last year. The majority of July revenue collections were from property taxes, which increased by 11% from July 2024. Approximately $26.8 million of the $27.5 million came from property tax collections. Property tax revenues are collected in April and December. The April collections were recognized as current fiscal year revenue and accounts for the district receiving, the district receiving such a large percentage of budget revenue. Forty-two percent of the budgeted property tax revenue is traditionally received within the first month of the fiscal year. Expenses are normal for this time of the year. The district has expended 2% of the overall budget or approximately $2 million for the month of July. This is thirty, this is thirty-five percent lower than what was spent in July 2024. The decrease in expenses is due to last year's payroll shift, including to work 185 and 190 days. Overall, year-to-date, there is a surplus of approximately $25.5 million due primarily to the large receipt of property tax collection posted in July. Last year at this time, the surplus was $20.9 million. The surplus of revenue is normal at this time of the year. The fund balance of $48 million consists of the surplus of revenue and fiscal year '25 unadded end-of-the-year fund balance, which was $22.7 million at the time this report was written. This number is subject to change. Last year's fund balance was approximately $41 million. Please note that the fund balance will decrease as the expenditures increase and revenue begins to decrease. July revenue for capital funds consists of approximately $8,836 from earnings on investment. The receipt of capital proceeds begin in August. Expenses are normal for this time of the year and customarily exceed revenue. The $495,000 deficit will be covered by the fund balance, which was approximately $4 million in July. Fiscal year '26 anticipated expenses for capital, which includes outstanding projects from fiscal year '25, is approximately $9 million. Special revenue funds consist mainly of federal, local, and state grants not budgeted in general funds. We are currently closing out fiscal year '25 grants, receiving reimbursement, and preparing for fiscal year '26. Food nutrition revenue and expenses are trending within the same range as previous years. During the summer months, when food is out, food nutrition traditionally operates at a deficit. Receipt of food nutrition revenue from sales and federal government typically begins in the month of August. The $117,138 deficit will be deducted from the fund balance, which is currently right under a meter. I will be happy to respond to any questions or provide clarification.
The July nutrition deficit, that's just recovering staff and salaries, like?
Thank you, Dr. Broom. Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you, this item is, this item is on to consent.
Chair Sultan, may I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
I recommend that the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approve the consent agenda items one through eleven.
Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items one through eleven?
So moved.
Board Member Johnson Davis makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Board Member Us seconds the motion. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss number six, GMC.
Okay.
So I believe that is the approval of the contract for the design and build of the ECLC, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so I so appreciate that the new design between our August board meeting and today includes that change, and correct me if I'm wrong, that was inspired by the city's input, so we no longer have a variance. I'm glad that that happened. However, you know, I'm thinking of our community engagement, booking strategies, and I'm thinking of what I've heard sort of input into, say, the path sessions and designs. We did host them, and I'm so appreciative we did so. But afterwards, I think we learned that many people felt like they weren't included. So, you know, I'd like to know if there's an opportunity for the community who wants to be involved, not to question the project, but simply to give input on the design.
As a point of clarification, the consent agenda item is not on the design itself. It's for the services, it's for the services for the actual vendor, not the design itself. So that should be the discussion point, is that what you want?
Okay, then maybe, I'm sorry, it was like 500 something pages we had. So when I looked through the entire contract, I thought what it was saying is effectively, we're going to use this, the design that we were presented today with this contract. There are no other designs, correct? Other than the city, as we discussed earlier, coming back and saying something like, you know, when I asked about the permit feedback, and I think Hans, you clarified that, hey, there could be something about erosion that would make the city do that. But otherwise, the construction company and the, you know, related entities are specific to building, the building according to the designer represented, is that correct?
What I'm reading here, I'm sorry. Yes, I, I wanted to share that design is an iterative process. And so what the summary of this item is, is under this agreement, GMC will deliver all architectural, engineering, and landscape design services that are required to complete the project. The 500-page document is not for this item. The 500-page document is for the arising contract.
But either way, I'm, so I'm sorry if I'm unclear. I mean, I thought the design of the new ECLC was a product of GMC's work, and now we're looking at bringing that all the way forward with this GMC contract, is that?
This is a renewal of the contract that's been on the agenda items last four.
Mm-hmm, yes. This was already, yes, this is the continued, this is a renewal of a contract that you already have in place.
Okay, and so again, just to reiterate, unlike the city input for the new modification of the ECLC building with the newest design, there will be no other opportunity for the public to give input on the building design?
Not, not regarding changing the design at this point, no.
Okay.
I mean, our, our, our next decision regarding the design is whether we accept the PFA indebtedness that we, that I think is an October vote, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, and that guaranteed maximum price is not provided by GMC. That is provided by the construction manager at risk, which is Parish Construction, which was approved also by this board.
But to clarify, the recommendation that's in the packet here for GMC is to approve their continued engagement with GMC as a district architect to complete construction documents, provide construction administration for the ECLC, related capital improvements, coordinate with the construction manager at risk, Parish Construction, pre-construction services.
Okay.
That's the, um, is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Um, we will move to the public comment portion of our meeting at 6:30?
Actually, we're gonna do policy. We have one policy. Uh, so Chair Sultan, I would like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch, Chief of Staff, to present two policies for per three actions.
Good evening, Board Chair Dr. Sultan, Vice Chair, esteemed members of the board, Student Representative Botra, and Superintendent Dr. Julia Whitaker. Tonight, we have two policies for action. These policies are IFBG, Internet Acceptable Use, and BH, Board Code of Ethics. First is policy IFBG, Internet Acceptable Use. This policy was presented last month for first read and has been available for public comment through assembly. No public comment was received. A few grammatical changes were made to the version presented last month, primarily removing repetitive language. May I read the recommendation?
Yes.
It is recommended that City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approve policy IFBG, Internet Acceptable Use, for action.
I have a motion to approve the recommendation of policy IFBG, Internet Acceptable Use, for second read.
They move.
Board Member Us makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Johnson Davis seconds the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Next is policy BH, Board Code of Ethics. This policy was reviewed by the Board of Education during your annual ethics training that took place during the August board retreat. No changes have been made to the policy. The recommendation being made tonight will be for the board to take action to reaffirm the policy, which will update the last review date. May I read the recommendation? It is recommended that the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education take action to reaffirm existing policy BH, Board Code of Ethics.
I have a motion to take action to reaffirm the existing policy BH, Board Code of Ethics.
They move.
Board Member Us makes the motion, is there a second? Board Member Anderson seconds the motion, is there any discussion?
Were, were these two policies the ones that were law required, or was that a different set of policies? That may have been a different set of.
Policy IFBG was a revision to an existing policy in response to some legislation, and BH is just the annual kind of reaffirmation of ethics.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Okay, now, we will move to public comments.
Yes, I know, at least.
Until 6:30?
Do we have anybody online?
One, one person I know is here. Ms. Bowman is here.
Is there anyone else on the?
Uh, there are three others, there are two, uh, three total, and they're all in person.
Well, do we want to move it forward, or do we?
Are they all here?
I don't think they're all here.
And I think we have to wait.
Yeah, I think they have to wait.
Yeah, okay, we will come back at 6:30. Public comments. The following information is included in the board's policy manual, and members of the public also acknowledge this information when they sign up to speak. This serves as a reminder for all speakers and members of the audience, the opportunity to address the board during public comment is limited to district parents, students, residents, employees, businesses, and organizations. Persons wishing to address the board during public comment must sign up by 5:30 p.m. and in doing so, will be asked to state their connection to CSE and/or the city of Decatur. To allow time for the board's other business, public comment will be ordinarily limited to one hour or 20 speakers. At the board's discretion, public comment may be extended for a specified amount of time or a specific number of additional speakers. The time limit for all speakers will be three minutes. Persons speaking during public comment will not be permitted to yield the floor or transfer unused time to other speakers. Comments during public comment should be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual board members. At the chair or chair's discretion, persons violating this policy may be asked to step down. Speakers should be courteous and professional. Speakers are not to list complaints about specific personnel or individuals connected with the district in a public session. The board strictly prohibits abusive language, threats, comments, jeers, applause, or shouts from the floor. Disruptive persons will be asked to leave the meeting room. The chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defamatory, or disruptive. If any speaker's comments begin to verge into the areas of hate speech or defamation, I will have to ask that speaker to end their comments. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel matters, but may wish to submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the board will not address persons presenting public comments or speak to the substance of any comments made during public comment. Instead, a member of the administrative team will follow up with persons speaking at the board meeting. Dr. Whitaker, will you please call our first speaker?
The first speaker is Laura Bowman.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Laura Bowman. I'm a parent of two here in Decatur and a resident. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Largely, I'm going to save my comments for next week. I'm very interested in hearing more before I share more, and so I'm delighted to hear that building utilization is part of our community conversation next week. I did, however, want to take this opportunity in this beautiful room to call our collective attention to this space. I wish that our classrooms and that our learning spaces looked and felt like this. Environment matters. Environment tells our kids that they matter, that education matters. And I know this personally because I taught at Drew Charter School, and the building, the K-8, the elementary school building that is now there replaced a windowless brick building with a window-rich building whereby every classroom had natural light, because environment does matter. And I know that we all see Decatur teachers and staff and leadership doing the most, and I'm very grateful for that. And I want us to continue to show our gratitude, not just with words of praise, but by ensuring that every classroom, every cafeteria, every media center, every playground, and every hallway shines like our team in Decatur does, and that our places are spaces that exemplify our commitment of all-in for our kids who show up every morning, bringing their very best to our building. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sarah Turner McFarlane.
Evening, my name is Sarah Turner McFarlane. I have two children here in CSE. The new ECLC plan raises questions about priorities and trust for me. I worry that they could pull millions of dollars away from addressing the needs already in our schools. For families like mine with kids on 504s navigating autism, ADHD, and dyslexia, equity and compliance aren't optional. There are legal and ethical obligations that must be met. Many families have struggled to get services. Some have even had to leave CSE because these supports weren't accessible. I'm not against expanding early childhood opportunities. Those needs are also real. But trust is built in the district, shows it can meet the needs of current students while investing in future initiatives. If the district truly values literacy, equity, and inclusion and justice, then it should be able to demonstrate that commitment by ensuring support. be able to demonstrate that commitment by ensuring support for students with disabilities are in place. And my question is, how does CSE's all-release system translate to include concrete support for students with autism, disabilities, and special ed services? Thank you.
That is all?
Okay, thank you. We would like to thank all of the speakers for taking the time to be here tonight. As board members, it is important for us to hear the concerns, and we'll take your comments into consideration. Dr. Whitaker, we go into the next item, it's future date. All right. The board will host our second two-way community meeting of the year on Monday, September 15th, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at Beacon Hill Middle School. Our next board meeting will be held here at the Wilson Center on October 14th, 2025. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:30, 7:00 PM.